Eight o'clock, when it comes our turn to do Cumberland Farms, they're still working on Cumberland Farms. And then they have, I guess, two weather permits, so they're, we're gonna swap at eight o'clock. Look them up here and we'll go down there. Assuming, I hope that they take their vote by eight o'clock. It seemed like they were close to closing public.
No, no.
Have they not even closed public?
Yeah, they're not through the public hearing and I sat there for forty-five minutes and I don't know if they understand the question of voting.
So, the other thing, Carolyn is gone, can't make it till she has a childcare issue, so Wayne's gonna be staffing. So, I'm not sure they add what, an extra hour to our meeting?
Why don't we have Wayne go up and babysit?
And so, the first thing on our agenda was Kensington Estates, who was asked for a continuation. Wayne, I don't know if they've asked, oh, they have asked till the ninth at seven thirty?
Yeah, and they've done an agreement, we always ask for a written agreement to protect us, to waive the rights for, say, taking too long.
And do you know why they just weren't ready, or they're still working with the DPW?
There's still issues, DPW is very concerned about utilities on the west of the entrance.
The sixty-six side?
The sixty-six side, whether those pipes will be underwater. And they're not sure they want to accept the road if the pipes should be underwater.
Right, that was the very wet side.
Maybe other issues as well, but that's the big one.
Alright, so they're not even close then for the DPW to sign off on? Side show move. On favor? Alright, so Kensington will be on for the ninth. Carolyn sent out a list of some smaller topics that we can discuss. One of the things I just had a question about before we get to that, Wayne, was for the first meeting in January, which is the... One, two, three, it's the tenth, seven? Ten. We don't, I don't think we have anything on the agenda, I'm not sure if you would know that, but I don't think...
I don't know the answer.
Okay, currently, I don't think there's anything on the agenda for the tenth.
We certainly can't guarantee we're planning things, you know, this stuff.
Right, but I, but it's, I think Carolyn said there was a possibility of something maybe coming in, but as far as I know right now, we don't have any permits on the agenda for the tenth. Oh, the twelfth?
First Tuesday to twelfth.
Yeah, we do, actually, we're filing, Monday's the deadline, and we're filing for Florence Fields, Florence Recreation. So hopefully you're gonna have that though.
Okay, the soccer field and the baseball field, too? Why do they need a permit from us?
Site plan approval because over seven parker spaces.
Oh, what about the acre disturbance, they need a stormwater?
It's a stormwater permit, for you guys, it's the number of parker spaces they need.
So we'll do that probably on the twelfth then? And they did get their money from the CPA, so, they did?
Yeah, they did.
They did, though I don't know if they got the grant?
Still waiting.
Still waiting?
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money. Wayne, do you wanna do, I mean, do you have any particular order you wanna do these things, or you wanna do?
Doesn't matter to me, I have this presentation for you guys, and there's rezoning, and then the other things that are on that last one.
Uh, yeah, let's do just a couple of quick things before we do the presentation. The minutes from eleven-ten, everybody get those? We're moving back down there anyway.
Been wandering around, looking for it.
Any comments on the minutes from eleven-ten?
I just sent a couple of things there for Carolyn, I don't remember what they were, but I'm sorry.
You already sent them, too? Anybody else got any comments on the minutes? A little bit. Alright, made a session, all in favor? Alright, minutes. The reissuance of the release of the lot, this is the, the one on sixty-six?
The Ridge.
The Ridge, I thought Dunky was the road that was off the...
This is not their one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, I thought it was. You're right.
The other solar, I think. That's down near you.
Yeah, this is the ones at the end of Dunky Drive, if you remember, there's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, white overs.
Right, and what, what, what is the reissuance of that one?
They never recorded the old one, and the bank wants a new, clean one. So Todd never recorded it, the bank took over the property.
Right, I know one of those properties got taken over.
Right, and so rather than just finding Todd's old one, they'd rather have a clean reissue.
So...
So you already voted some time ago to release this?
We're releasing the covenant on it?
So this goes back to 2004, October fourteenth, 2004.
Yeah, I think Brandon was the only one who was here.
Voted the covenant on lock to ring, it was apparently never recorded. The bank took over the property, wanna make sure they're clean titled.
And the covenant is for?
For that lot within the subdivision, basically the covenant says, I won't build on this property until the plan board signs off.
Is there anything special about this that we should know about, or?
No, again, you, you voted before, it's really just to reissue it to the bank as a clean record.
Anybody have any questions on this one?
Double.
Second? All in favor? Oh, Devin, are you voting or you have a question?
What was this, parcels around the central business Florence, et cetera?
We haven't got to that yet.
Oh, okay.
We're doing the easy stuff first. Right, we're doing the easy stuff first, so we did the minutes, the release of the covenants. And is this, yeah, let's do, let's do Wayne. Can you hear a chair? Sure, we can get a chair.
So, if you remember, we talked about a series of zoning changes before you guys, maybe in September, I think. And these zoning changes came from, sorry, I project, these zoning changes came originally from, we looked at all the institutions in town that are being surplus. You know, possibly Florence Grammar, possibly Parsha Clark School, Cement College, Catholic Churches. And sort of thought, okay, we've never really paid a lot of attention to the zoning, because those are all exempt uses. When there's non-exempt uses, we need to think about, what's the right zoning for that area? And so you guys talked about this in September, we did a presentation to you, and sort of a few approaches we might take for that. You said, that sounds good, we went out and held two community meetings, both on November, Wednesday of November sixteen. One downtown and one at JFK, to get input, and then are reporting back to what we heard, to see if you're willing to go forward to council, and we can talk about what we started at, what we're recommending now. So, this is sort of, you saw the same presentation whenever we did this in September, but now it's revised somewhat to reflect the changes. So, this is the first one, this is Holly Street, everything on the east side of Holly Street is currently owned by the Catholic Church, that's the Catholic Church there. And on the south side of Phillips Place, that's the parking lot, it's owned by the Catholic Church, so that's what sort of got us to look in this area. Those properties, the three buildings and the parking lot, are currently zoned, Urban Essential City. It's not gonna be, you know, multifamily homes, it's gonna be extensive Catholic churches there. So, we're looking at this, and that becomes central business. The post office in Augies are already central business, so it's sort of, you know, it's next to a central business district. In doing this, we also looked at Holly Street, and said we should be cleaning this up at the same time. And Holly Street there, a few different zoning districts. The first building is the condo building, the next one is the, you know, the old lumberyard, that's what is now Athletic Club. One of those is own neighborhood business, one is own special industrial, we need to make sense for all those properties to be zoned, Urban Essential City.
The old lumberyard is now your...
Was that?
Central business, yeah.
To be zoned, yeah. We also, in September, we also looked at going all the way down to Holly Street, and that was a little more controversial in the public hearings, more concerned, and I think our suggestion is, let's focus on the things that are pretty easy, let's do the low-hanging fruit now. We may wanna come back later and look at the rest of Holly Street, but these seem pretty simple.
So you're going to the end of Health Club?
End of Health Club, and then you see how the Health Club property actually wraps around, so it has some parking that's behind, I don't have a laser pointer. I don't have a laser pointer, but, the Health Club wraps around, so that L-shaped piece, we're getting that property as well, just so we're not leaving an isolated industrial.
What's on the other side where it says Pearl Street and all that?
So that's already downtown.
But is that central business?
That's central business, right, and in fact, that property, that long thin building is the depot. The zoning district right now is a center railroad tracks, so it doesn't really matter to railroad tracks, except for for consistency. It's really more everything out of the west, and the east side of railroad tracks.
And over to Harvard Street, that's also a central business.
That's correct.
But this is just bringing us more into conformity with its neighboring lots.
So, question, the church owns, the church itself, the hall, and then they also own a two-family house, and what else?
I think they own some outbuildings, I think that's it, it's the main...
There's three main buildings.
And the parking lot, the parking lot across the street, the parking lot across the street, right?
Three main buildings are the church, the hall, and... But then there's another two-family house that people live in, the church actually, my question is, is that hall?
For the churchroom?
Yes. It's like, kind of on Phillips Place, but it's that easement that goes back into the church parking lot.
Alright, so this building doesn't show up here, so that's like, where that one thin building is, that's the hall, so you're saying there's another building that's not shut off in this building?
Yeah, yeah.
So that would be part of this, right?
The church inn, so, yeah.
That one right there?
No.
The little teeny thing there, covered up like a...
That's what I thought, it was under that brown line right there.
It should all be done, the church parking lot should be zoned.
I was wondering about possible, what negatives there could be about changing something in the central business, what effect does that have on existing?
So central business...
Residences on the first floor first.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, none of the, well, neighborhood business allows that that building doesn't have it anyway, so you couldn't do a new residence on the first floor. They'd be grandfathered, so the rectory or the two-family home would be grandfathered if they didn't change. If they wanted, if they changed away, became an office building, then they couldn't change back on the first floor. So they can keep the residential forever, but as soon as they move, they lose their grandfather.
But the whole idea of more mixed use, would be excluded from this if it's all being central business?
No, no, central business is the most mixed use of everything.
Including residential?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't allow residential first floor.
Not the first floor, but second floor.
Both floors, what makes people like, central, so central business, we always talk about as being a carrot and stick. The carrot is the most permissive district, you can have an office on second floor, and go to housing, and go to retail, and go back to anything else without even coming in. I mean, literally, the tenant can change, you don't even have to ask the planner. The stick part is, when you're central business, you're also in central business architecture. So, in essence, this is, you've all heard of form-based zoning, our downtown basically is form-based zoning, we're saying we're really permissive about uses, but we're not permissive about what it looks like.
We want it, yeah, look, it's the structure, how it's gonna look.
The residential house that we're talking about, only has a kitchen on the left one, that's the only kitchen in that building. I don't know if that matters.
So they're grandfathered?
No, it's not, that's not the house I'm talking about. The house I'm talking about broadly addressed may be Phillips Place, but the church owns it, and it's that easement that goes back into the parking lot.
We did, we did have a discussion, we talked about carving that out as being a separate residential district, but the problem is, is we have no frontage, so it would actually be more non-conformal.
It's thirty-six Phillips Place, yeah, it's my old one, so...
But yeah, so we couldn't really practically carve it out into different districts, because then there'd be no legal frontage.
So it will be central business?
It'll be central business.
I think that's profitable, of the whole, yeah.
Just to give you an example, it's exactly like that, if you go down to Center Port, there's a few single-family homes in Center Port, they've been there for, they've owned central business for eons. One of those has been diverted to offices, now there's offices on the first floor, they couldn't convert back to housing on the first floor, but there's two or three or four other ones that are still residential on the first floor. And the idea of not residential on the first floor is residential sort of a dead spot, so you'd like that to be more alive on the first floor, but above the first floor for exactly reasons you're saying.
So what, when we look at this, we came to the other meetings, we heard the public talking, what are we supposed to do?
So you guys said to make, so we're doing this slow, we talked to you with this outreach, if you are willing to go forward, you'd make a recommendation to city council. Do we go to city council, well, they were referred out, we have a formal vote, the form we did before is an informal process, to let us be heard of, so this will come back to you one more time for a public hearing that you do with ordinance committee. You can change your mind again then, but...
So you're gonna present all of these changes to us now, and then as a group, or are you gonna go one by one?
It's up to you, I think one by one might make sense, because it's fresh in your mind, it's up there, if you have questions. Maybe vote all at the end, but at least, you know, make sure you get a flavor of the board, you know?
Well, it certainly makes sense to me.
I think it does.
Does this differ at all from the earlier presentation you made with Earl Brown?
We went further down, nothing here is different, but the other one also went further down Holly Street. So in two neighborhood meetings, we went all the way, almost to Holly Street.
Was there objections from the public?
Well, there was some, it was a concern that there is a storm sewer that's right along Holly Street. And central business, one of the restrictions is the building can't be more than so many feet back from the street, can't be more than ten feet back without a special permit. So one of the concerns was, when we know there's a storm sewer, we know it's really hard to build on it, so we're setting up every single redevelopment project to require a special permit. And you could build up a storm sewer, but it's much more expensive, so that was that concern for doing it.
Yeah, 'cause you've got, what, shoe fix and have, what?
And the reason you had to build us far back was because of the storm sewer.
It's all kind of commercial, you know?
Well, that's what got us thinking, central business made sense, but the setback, you know, I still wanna, we still think we're gonna ignore that, because we're really doing the easy stuff now, it may make sense, that should be general business, instead of envy that it is now.
So should we vote on this now, or?
Or this, is there, essentially, you wanna go forward, you can vote all at the end, either one's fine, I guess.
Let's move on to the end.
Okay.
Because it's like, it's like, it's like...
Let's just move.
We all heard all...
I know, well, let's stop looking at this one and move on, that's what I was trying to say.
So Con Street, similar thing, this was also pulled back, so this is the North Hampton Market on the corner of Old South and Con Street, you know, the Cumberland Farms look alike, I think, sometimes. And that's a neighborhood business, then there's two multifamily homes, one of which already has a law office as a, they have Fox Office, and I mean, three, three homes, and there's offices, I mean, two of the three. And then there's Paradise Compass, so again, it's neighborhood business, URC neighborhood business, we're suggesting it will be central business. Earlier, we were showing go all the way down to the senior center, I still think that makes sense, but there was some concern for the neighborhood, about that much development there. The issue, you know, people have this vision of central business allows sixty-five-foot tall buildings, and they're worried, what is sixty-five-foot tall building? I know it's a big, just an example, we rezoned State Street, the east, the west side of State Street, twenty years ago now, to URC. In that time, we had, the only new construction project was the bakery. But we had a few doctors' office, or a few lawyers' offices come in, so it's that, you know, we get that kind of evolution, we don't get people who want sixty-five feet, I'd love it, we don't get them, you know, I mean, the Strong Block, which is the biggest new building we have, only built three stories, it's like, so I don't think you'd get that stuff, but people...
How tall is Con Street Plaza?
Seven blocks?
Seven blocks.
Oh, quite seventy-five, I guess. The reason I'm also happy pulling back is, we're going to the senior center, frankly, because that seemed like a low-hanging fruit, we have to do a study, a little bit of all Con Street sometime. It's just weird, the district changes every twenty feet, but there's no need to do that right now, to try and get the...
There were some residences, I recall, at the meeting I went to, who were kind of concerned.
That's why we're pulling this back.
There's a lot of... And so, around it, the green, the olive-colored areas are all, what?
They're all residential, so...
Pure residential.
Well, a pure residential zone, there's some residential, commercial uses.
So, I'm just wondering, is this like an island, the central business?
Well, it's a peninsula, yeah.
In the midst of...
Right, but again, it has already, is three or four businesses in that place. So, the reason this one seemed easier is, it's already built with density of central business, so it's not like you'd demand to tear down perfectly good buildings. The only building that should be taller is Paradise Compass, and frankly, if they wanted a second story, that would be great.
It seems like a important...
Yeah, exactly. Okay, so these are, this in some ways cleaning things up, so the big square in back is River Run Apartments. It's zoned general industrial, it hasn't been general industrial for forty years, but it's zoned that way, it's not gonna change from how it's in URC, is the closest that we have to what it really is. And then Drossel's Funeral Home, which is zoned industrial, it's also not industrial site, and whether it reopens as a funeral home or something else, it's gonna be a business use. So, this sort of makes it like easier, gets rid of these, you know, everyone there is non-conforming, when in fact, we like the uses there.
What's the, one is GI to SC for Drossel, one's GI to GB, what's the?
So, there's a tiny sliver that's two fifty even, SC is the flag, no, so we're correcting the flag.
Were we gonna eliminate one of the two GI or GB, put them in, class them into one, can we talk about that?
We've talked about it, not, neither one of those, we've talked about making a, a, you know, a center district, but it would basically be, we might rename GB, but not necessarily do something different.
What's the tail grid, you know, it's like a triangle?
It's zoned industrial, heavy, you know, general industrial, and that's the interstate that's right.
I see the interstate, but I was thinking more, that little triangle, it's gonna be two pieces.
Oh, so, just to the left is Drossel Funeral Home?
Yeah.
So that's where Maka is, the sporting goods place, the...
So how's that all zoned?
So that would stay GB, so all, the rest of Damon Road is GB, right? So Drossel's Funeral Home is sort of an in-holding within that GB, does this make sense? So, this one is the West Farms area, so this is the one we talked about getting rid of zoning potential, you know, neighborhood business doesn't really make a lot of sense. And so we're not getting rid of neighborhood business, but as we do rezones, we're looking at what's the appropriate place for that. And this seems like one, really sensible to go from neighborhood business to general business. So this is Jim's Variety Store in West Farms, and Jim's is at risk of going under, frankly, neighborhood business doesn't allow, they talked about that one in the pizzeria, and neighborhood business doesn't allow having a pizzeria. And the issue is, there's fewer and fewer mom and pop grocery stores around, they need to bring in some other business to keep alive. It's a good place because this neighborhood is a fairly long distance from either downtown North Hampton or Florence, or East Hampton, these three commercial areas. So having a tiny little commercial center makes sense. So the, the main core of this is going from neighborhood business to general business, that's the big one. Then the rest is cleaning things up a little bit, on the west side, the left side of the screen, that's up a steep hill, that's never gonna be business district, I don't know why it's owned business district, so we're rezoning that residential, which is what the rest of that area is like.
Doesn't it make, because it crosses two property boundaries?
Right, makes sense, that's what's going on.
Well, no, but so does the RR, oh, everything else is RR, so it makes...
So that weird lot that makes the, the shape, that actually has a house on Turkey Hill Road, and that's just how the minimum lot size requires.
That little narrow strip at the top?
Yeah, we changed the zoning system, but...
Comes down like that, right?
Yeah, so, you know, the house is in RR, the entire lot's in RR. And so all of these are cleaning things up a little bit, the area, to match where they should be, to, and to match property values.
And there was a lot of conversation about that in terms of the hill there.
Right, exactly. And then this is Leeds, I'm actually gonna suggest you don't take action on this, we didn't have anybody from Leeds that came to either one of the meetings. And I talked to Joe, George Kohat, your former, you know, board member, and he's gonna organize an outreach with the Leeds Civic Association. So, you know, he's very interested, they may actually be interested in expanding it, having a, the zone, rezoning cover even more properties, but if they're willing to do an outreach, I can just soon put this on hold. Then, this one is two properties, the property to the right is the old Florence Grammar School, it's now Florence Civic, I'm, I'm sorry, Florence Community Center. And this was built from urban residential big, which implies we wanted to be two-family homes, to office industrial. Whether the city keeps that property or sells the property someday, having more flexibility for the building is probably a good thing. Right now, you can have a community center, which is what they are, but like, from time to time, they've wanted to rent offices for for-profits, and that's not allowed. And I think it'd be great use for the site, you know, if you can't make it all, if you, you know, if you can get for-profits to pay part of the rent, to keep the rest of the building affordable, educational uses, I think that'd be wonderful.
Well, it's mostly parking, it's a...
Right, that's exactly right.
So would that be able to be developed upon?
Yeah. It's very steep, I mean, the parking lot, it's a flat parking lot, and a very steep drop down there, so it could be developed, whether there's a market for it, I don't know, in theory it could be developed. And then the property to the left is Florence Mini Mall, which is own neighborhood business, which really doesn't fit, like, those two restaurants there, neither are allowed in the current zoning, they're grandfathered. General business would allow them, now that said, it's a new grandfathering, which is, in general business, we don't allow parking between the road and the building. Clearly, they have an enormous parking lot between the road and the building, but they'd be grandfathered. If they ever tore down the building and started all over again, we'd want it to look different, if it didn't, then that used to continue.
I don't remember, did anybody from the property owners of that building?
No one came from that?
Came, that one either.
Right.
It's sort of weird shaped, the way it's sort of tucked in there, too, there's almost like frontage nowhere.
It's the best timed restaurant.
I don't think the owners are planning to do anything.
Don't threaten the town.
Didn't the, the Rite Aid that was in there close? Wasn't it?
Yeah, the Rite Aid, and the laundromats in there.
Oh, was it, somebody went in?
Sam's, Sam's, it was a little bit of a...
Oh, the Rite Aid was gonna close, I think we would try that new restaurant.
The Rite Aid, which one?
Yeah, that new little diner.
The restaurant, I don't remember the name of it, it took a bunch of...
I talked to Robert Ross at Florence Civic, he had some concerns about rezoning the community center until he knew if the city was selling the property or not, but I'm not sure that really matters, it seems like it's, what's the right use for it, if it was gonna sell it. I am gonna meet with him in the next couple of weeks, so I'll get there and hook before this goes through all the public.
Well, the only thing that would be is, because so many of those schools were turned into residential, you know, in URB, in office industrial, could you make the second floor residential?
Only if it was live work, but in URB, you couldn't either, URB allows two-family homes, so either way...
Oh, so you couldn't convert it?
To all condos now, anyway.
I thought URB allowed more than two-family.
Less townhouses, side-by-side townhouses, which will often get greater density, but wouldn't work for a building like that. Yeah, most new dense projects in URB are townhouses. Alright, so the last one is tax, this covers three or four slides.
I should just back up, if I might, I can ask a question, why office industrial rather than GB or something?
It's a traffic issue, it's not a great site, there's no on-street parking on the street, I mean, there is on the side street, at Porta Selly, but it's not. Because you start getting, you know, the neighborhood across the street, retail's a lot more traffic and a lot more impacts, so I think for that reason.
And the church is right next to that, too.
And we've talked about rezoning that as well.
Is that church, are people still going there?
Yeah, but she's actually both by whatever denomination it is.
Oh, Elizabeth's Supermarket?
Uh, no, no, it's...
It's a temple, too.
It's a temple, too, right? That's the reform.
Trigian, oh, oh, that's right, it's not a temple, yeah.
And we thought of doing that one as well, sort of the same answer, does it seem like it's too much, you know, again, trying to deal with the low-hanging fruit. We also talked, frankly, directly across the street, on the corner of Pine and Porta Selly, is the old nursing home, we should think about that at some point, but those just, we tried to get really, the, you know, the problem we have with all these changes that is the same in North Hampton, is that we do everything we want, we never can do anything, so we're trying to get off our plate the ones that seem really easy.
It's still a nursing home, though, right?
It was on Market a few years ago, and it didn't seem to go anywhere, but it's, you know, it's not a business model, that size place is gonna survive for a while, so we need to talk about this. Okay? So then, there's a series of four slides of code, so this we talked about in the past, but this is ignoring maps. When you have a commercial property or industrial property, and the zoning changes, the old uses grandfather, you all know that. But because education uses and religious uses are allowed anywhere in common room, when those uses cease to be used, they're not grandfathered, because they're allowed by law. So that means when, say, Smith-Hell or Blessed Pop, or the Clark School, or the city, or the Catholic Church, there's no grandfathering those properties. And so how do you reuse a big Catholic church in the middle of a residential neighborhood that's owned, single-family homes? So this is, in essence, an attempt to do two things, in essence, an attempt to create some grandfathering, if you will, for those uses, but also to create a strong incentive to encourage property owners to preserve those historical buildings. So it is, you know, the goals are here, allow adaptive reuse of the buildings themselves, create the incentive for you to reuse the buildings, but still, because these are... So it is, you know, the goals are here, allow adaptive reuse of the buildings themselves, create the incentive for you to reuse the buildings, but still, because these are little neighborhoods, have planning board.
What are you thinking of as incentives?
Well, we're just, so, so what we're talking about, the way we're talking about defining this is, educational religious buildings built prior to 1940. So you can't, you can't create a dog, a Catholic church or someone in a church can't buy a house in a residential neighborhood and then come before the planning board and say, I want a rental hotel. So we're only talking about, you know, old properties, they have to have used for at least twenty continuous years, and in some point in the last ten years. The reason for the last ten years, I don't want to reopen things that were settled, so for example, we used to own a church a year old war in Williams, I mean, a, a school on Williams Street. It became condos, I wouldn't want somebody that could come into the offices. So we're only talking things that have been used relatively recently. And then the definition that's in quotes, that's exactly what the state defines religious education, so those are the things that today are exempt under our zoning. And then here's the incentives, Catherine, so in a residential district-
Wayne, you gotta go to PowerPoint classics. That's exactly what you're not supposed to put on, that's the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You need some little animated part two.
See, you can have this on, so you can follow it home, although it's a trip, it'd be too small anyway.
Oh my goodness, oh yeah.
I'll, I'll just look at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't even read that.
I can't read that. You look my glasses. Janet, one more, too?
Okay, so, but I'm walking through your answer to your words right now, the idea is to say, in these old buildings, so only in the old building, the building that's been there since 1940, you could reuse the building for any, any education, I mean, for any residential use, for any live workspace, or any office, provided that no more than twenty percent of the space is medical office or office and see a lot of customers. So the idea is to say, we want a lot of mixed use in these buildings, it would be great if someone took the old church next to the high school, or took, you know, some other fancy building somewhere in town, and put mixed use in those buildings. But we're worried, because our neighborhoods, we're worried about really high traffic uses, and so doctors' offices, banking, services, offices that provide service to the public, they're allowed, but not more than twenty percent of the square foot. So you could still have those uses, everyone loves doctors because they pay the highest rent, so they're the ones who pay the freight to convert these buildings, but everybody hates them because they see, you know, six patients per hour per doctor, you know, so they're high traffic, so this seems to define the compromise. So we allow a lot of use, that's the carrot, the stick is, you have to save the building, you have to give a historic preservation restriction in a form of re-able to planning board. And you have to come before the planning board for site plan approval, so you get to look at all the details. And there wouldn't be a minimum lot size, you know, you have to save the building, then we're acknowledging, you have to save the building, but you could come in and say, here's my big building, it's eighty thousand square feet, I'm only going to save forty thousand square feet. That's fine, but your only grandfather for the forty thousand square feet, you know, whatever you save is what you can reuse, you can't tear down the building and put a modern building in. The one exception, because we have a real problem with seismic codes, is it's really hard to reuse some of these masonry buildings, and the trick science people do, and you know more of this stuff than I do. Trick science people do to make these buildings more seismically stable, is you put an elevator shaft up, which serves the elevator use, and at the same time, using it to stiffen the building. So we know, you put an elevator shaft up outside the building, and then elevator shaft is also anchoring part of the building to, to provide such stiffness.
And that's what Swift did on the old Catholic school building?
They needed the space as well, they did, that was really more about needing an elevator shaft, but that's certainly what, you know, when, yeah. When, what's his name, Tom Douglas, was arguing for saving the opening, that was his argument, to put a couple of elevator shafts on the outside, that would be the size of the church. So, you know, so it's a carrot and stick for doing it. Clark School is obviously very much our mine, because they're surplus in the property, although their current buyers plan to do all residential, so they may not use any of this. But I use a Clark School as an example, Clark School has a pool, you know, unfortunately, it's not a historical building, but that pool would be legal for Clark School, if it becomes housing. That pool would be legal for people who live in, in a Clark School to use, but what if they wanted to let the public in five hours a day to use the pool to help pay the freight? That's not actually allowed in our zone, you know, it's probably a bad example because it's not a historical building, but you could imagine, you know, or, I, I, he's a Clark School man, but it's, that might be true. They're talking about housing, which would be great, but there's one building that's four stories, but it's sort of half a basement and half come out, that's not going to be very attractive apartments, but it could be a great place for some offices, you know, offices want to be in the first floor, you know, and I, you know, allowing that flexibility might be great, now, their current buyer's not planning to do that, but this would give that flexibility.
What about St. Mary's?
St. Mary's actually zoned central business already, so they don't have that problem, I mean, they're probably how expensive the building is to fix out, but the use would be allowed.
So was, was the choice to do rentals versus condos, was there a reason for that, do you know?
For which?
Florence.
Oh, I don't know the answer, it's interesting, the only thing I can guess, this is totally a guess, is if the buyers asked, because that, they're in the National Register of Historic Places, they'd be eligible for historic reservation tax credits, which are only eligible for incompletely vacant properties. But I don't know if that's ever in mind, or if it's something the market will support it. The other thing is, remember, zoning doesn't regulate the ownership, so they could be apartments today where the market covers, convert to condos, we would never see it.
We won't, would we have to see, or were they going to have to come in and talk to you guys about the conversions, because?
It would be site plan approval at the very least.
For converting a single building, or we're going to look at a plan for the whole site?
Either one.
Yeah.
Oh, probably either one, I mean, it's a tiny building, it's below the parking lot threshold, but under most scenarios, they got to come before you.
Because of what, because of parking, because of the parking?
Maybe other thresholds as well, but so and so.
Right, because, I mean, the only thing I know, and I'm not sure if you guys, the only thing I know is what I read in the paper, which said, they're not going to change the footprint of the buildings, that's their, their goal is, so that's why I was wondering how much are we going to have in terms of-
There's plenty of parking up there, too.
Are there a lot of parking, I mean, what, what hap, with this sort of conceptual idea, what about parking?
Well, right now, you know, I'd like to reduce our parking, and we've done it already in a lot of districts, but right now, something could always come before your first special permit to reduce the number of parking spaces. And in particular, one of the ways you can do that is saying, I have a mixed-use building, so I peak demand for housings at night, for offices during the day. So that's something else that could come before you as well, if Clark School asks for reduction. They have lots of parking, but if they're talking about seventy-five units, I don't know if they have a lot of empty parking spaces there.
And some of the parking is not near, like, if they increase the density of this building, the parking lot's way over here.
That's right. But one is, for example, for Clark School, where this might come in, is the lot down Eleven Akers, which is big enough for the seventy-five acres, I mean, for the seventy-five units they're talking about. And if it's all either condos or rental and one ownership, that's fine, but there could well be some logical reason why they want to have one building owned by one company and one building owned by another company. And then a lot size could get away, or, I'll tell you something else, actually, from a four-to-one housing perspective. In URC, a lot size is determined by how many units you get, so they have enough land for seventy-five units, and so that's going to drive them to have a lot of units, they're two thousand, twenty-five hundred. They don't have enough, enough lot size if they wanted to have ninety units, some of which were thousand square feet or six hundred square feet. So there's nothing, in essence, would stop them from having smaller, more affordable units there. This would say, we don't care about that.
But we can change that, that's not what we're buying into the activity.
That's where our current zoning is.
But this would change-
This would change, at least in the historical buildings, this would say, and, and, they would have to buy, you know, again, picking on Clark Schools could apply to other properties as well. If there are eight buildings at Clark School, I'm making up the number, they could say, there's one building, we want to have a lot more units, the zoning would allow. Where put historic preservation restrictions? Well, either affordable, or what's sometimes called market rate affordable, you know, if the units are nine hundred square feet, there might be no affordable restrictions, but they're still starter units. If they're twenty-five hundred square feet, they're not affordable to most people.
And is there a way, with this, is there some way we can reduce the, the parking requirement?
I think we should, I think there's still a lot of pushback from neighborhoods, so this at least would, so your existing zoning, which gives you the right to waive parking, would remain. I personally would like to reduce parking much more dramatically, we've just decided through incrementality, so we've done URC Now and Highway Business, I guess it's the first two, so. We should, that's not a set language for this discussion right now. So this is, is residential districts, this language here is almost the same thing for commercial districts.
Oh, sorry, Fran, did you have a question on the last slide?
I just, I wanted to, that's what I wanted to say, that's what you were going on about.
So this is residential, right, and here's commercial, same basic thing for commercial districts, except that cap on the twenty percent goes away. If you want to take St. Mary's, the rest of St. Mary's, and make the entire thing a medical office complex, you should be able to do that in, in URC.
And you can have residential on the first floor?
Uh, and you can have residential on the first floor, right, again, that's the incentive, so here's the, here's the challenge to those old buildings, the staircases make it really hard sometimes to have commercial in these buildings. Because you can't, you have to put an elevator in, you have to have a handicap accessible entrance, so St. Mary's, you can get in the basement, but you can't get in the first floor, or maybe it's a sub-level, whatever it is. So you could imagine that building, it might be better off to have housing on the first floor. So it gives you that flexibility, and, and even though I love not having housing on the first floor in these buildings, that's the trade-off for preserving these old, wonderful, particularly churches.
Well, that's, yeah, that was, like, why, why is there such a prejudice in this one?
They're dead spots, there's a lot less foot traffic, and neighborhoods are really sensitive, soon to the block where people stop walking, people don't walk behind it. You know, I do, I think that one of the factors in making Yes Computers work was the fact that One Seventy-Nine Pleasant Street, the old SRO building, that we got rid of the units on the first floor right along the street, and we put commercial in there, it made that street more friendly, it's still, it's still residential in that building, but it's back, it's hidden, it's obviously from the street. Because it's, it's like, you know, there's windows, people look at it, it's more vibrant.
Yeah, but it doesn't, aren't there other situations, hotels where it might make sense, and it's prohibited anywhere?
I know, I mean, it's definitely prohibited, you know, I think we should look, the thing I'd like us to do is, is thinking about that One Seventy-Nine Pleasant Street, where they want to avoid the cost of an elevator, so they wanted residential units on the first floor, we wanted the street to be vibrant, and so the compromise was that residential units are behind the building. I think we want to think about that, we may want to think about, in central business and general business, we want to think, all the part of the building that faces the street should be commercial. But other than facing the street, residential won't be so.
Yeah, sorry, it's good, it's quarter off, we're going to be downstairs for a-
So that's if for this, oh, I'm sorry.
So the proposal then would be for us to move to a full distance and send this to the city council minus the leads?
Yes.
To be referred out, to start a review, also move.
Uh, any other questions, discussions, or comments?
Well, I'd like to see a little more thought coming to this, so.
What, to which part, this part?
All, 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 all the separate ones.
Thought by, you mean, detailed more information, or thought in terms of?
Yeah, more, I mean, sort of having to vote a bit more.
Well, we'll have one, because it's going to come to us anyway.
Could be a public, more, more open meeting, so this is-
Right, this would be a legal public hearing, so we'd notify all the property owners within the districts to do, do that.
Well, the city council will do it, they'll refer it to us, we'll do it with zoning, I mean, the ordinance committee, then we'll go back to city council.
So, Fran, are you saying that we'd like us to put more effort into it before we take the next step?
Would you accept the logic that this is, would you accept the logic that we will on the next round when it's more problematic, but that these are pretty much clear?
No.
I understand, I understand your issue is to avoid a lot of other meetings, if we get it right the first time, before we send it out?
I mean, that's not really my main consideration.
What, what is?
Well, I mean, there's some, it seems to me there were things that I thought, you know, the problem I thought like, the Holly Street thing, I wasn't quite, I thought, just sort of thought it was not, we're not sure about the buildings around the church and stuff like that, and then I don't, the, the Holly Street thing, which is not really contiguous with the central business, but, but particularly-
Constrict.
Constrict, I'm sorry. That's though, yeah.
The thing about constrict, though-
I wouldn't want to vote for the whole thing, it would group.
Well, the thing about constrict, we've been talking about trying to move central business somehow down Con Street and Pleasant Street for a while.
Yeah, I've always been pretty much against it.
Oh, I did not know that.
I think it makes sense, I saw it.
Well, so, I think it makes sense in the context of what's being proposed, initially, the proposal was more, had a little pushback, and so now we're going to the easy part that, to me, makes sense, where those buildings-
They're already business.
I think it makes sense, however, I wouldn't mind taking a little bit more time, like, driving around and really looking at it.
Well, so the timeline will be, if we vote for it, it'll go to city council, I can't imagine it's going to get referred back to us till after the new city council, we're talking, what, February?
Right, we'll go to city council in January, refer it out, and probably do a public hearing in February.
We'll do a public hearing in February, if the timing all works out with the new-
Right, right. So you have to February, if you want, you have to February to do the research, it's more a matter to get down that process.
Right.
Otherwise, we could use, you know, more, you know, pushing it back.
But isn't the practical effect of our, if they say we vote this and move it forward, the practical effect is that that sort of becomes the proposal?
Yeah, yeah, I, I'm strictly, I mean, I, you obviously can do it more time, strictly, you guys talked about this in September and liked it, we did outreach, you got two neighborhood meetings involved, so it seems like we've done all the things you're asking.
But I haven't seen anything from the government.
Well, that's what I just presented.
Well, he changed, so, so some of the maps have changed since those meetings, so the, the area of Holly Street, he shortened, the area of Con Street, they shortened, based on the feedback from those meetings.
Oh, yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Did you go to one of these?
No, and I don't want to have to go to that kind of meeting.
Well, we're going to have one no matter what, so we're going to, so I guess, I mean, so the, I guess the idea, or, do you want us to do another public meeting before this goes to city council?
No, 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 I just want to, I think, I think, yeah, Mary was like, uh, looking at the properties more, makes more sense, I mean, it's one thing to see in one shot.
Oh, yeah.
Even if I hand gun to this, it could be-
Couldn't we do that before February, you can drive all over the place and look at those places, and it doesn't mean that this is pass and conquer.
It does mean that, we just established that, this, it sort of becomes a proposal.
You can't, you can't expand, you can always pull it back, so it comes to district and law opposition on property, you can pull it back.
Well, and what I heard at the meeting, is what you've done, the last round and this one, you pulled back real quick whenever somebody had a serious complaint.
And we said, you know, it's not the way that you jump people turning out for anything, but we at least wrote to every single property owner within this district, within these areas.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm comfortable, I, I went to one of the meetings, and granted, there were, there were only a few people there from the public, I didn't go to the one at, what, the first one was at Brit Street, oh, the first one was at Council Chambers.
Right, we had more people, it still wasn't usual.
I went to the one at JFK.
There were quite a lot of people.
Yeah, I went to the one at JFK, but I'm fine kicking this off to start the discussion, because this is going to go, I mean, city council, you know, they're going to have their own shot at changing this thing when Wayne does a proposal anyway.
So I'm in favor of making the, the whole zoning, sort of cleaning it all up, so there aren't so many little patchy businesses in that, so fragmented. It seems like this is an effort to make these parts of the city more, sort of congruent with each other, which I think is a good idea.
I agree, I mean, I thought, conceptually, it was a good idea, we got the initial plan and said, conceptually, we're, we're good with this, we had neighborhood feedback, we tweaked it based on that feedback. Altogether, I think it's a good representation of what we want it to look like, and it's good enough to recommend it to at least start conversation in a formal way.
Right, that and, you know, taking needs off the table, because we didn't get any feedback from them, I think that was, you know, makes sense, so.
I mean, the problem with the whole zoning ordinance is that it is very fragmented, and so this is an effort to-
That's exactly it.
That's my call on Northampton general business.
Central, central business.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's do what, we've already had a motion and a second discussion, all in favor for pushing this forward to city council? All opposed? Two, I gotta do the math, sixty-two. So we're going to move down to council chambers and resume at eight o'clock, if officially adjourned, if we just-
Yeah.
Major special permit with site plan, Cumberland Farms, one hundred Main Street, Florence, map ID is twenty-three A dash sixty-seven and seventy-eight. Just, so the plan would, uh, to know, the ZBA had the hearing before us, also on the same property, the ZBA continued their hearing. The applicant needs an approval from both boards in order to proceed, though our vote is completely separate from the ZBA's. So if we decide, for example, to vote yes, and the ZBA voted no, the plan should not go forward. not go forward. And the same with the other way around. They need approval from both boards. There's no stormwater requirement, it's a small area. There are conditions that the DPW has issued. And we'll go over those after the applicants had their chance to speak. So we'll hear from the applicant, then the board, we'll ask questions for the applicant, and then we'll hear from the public. So if someone from the applicant would like to make their presentation?
Hi, I'm Peter McConnell. I'm an attorney with Bacon Wilson in Amherst, and I represent Cumberland Farms here this evening. I know you all have received a pretty complete packet of information, but what I'd like to do is, um, give you a little bit more, basically, pictures and some, uh, arguments so that I don't need to touch on each criteria, the special permit, each criteria of the site plan review. I've got written responses in there to, uh, to do that. Is there enough?
One more. You want more?
Uh, we're lucky, but.
Full screen.
If you could share for now, that would be great. As I said, I represent Cumberland Farms this evening. With us this evening is Jim Heffernan, who's an associate in our office, a lawyer. Paul Wilson, who is the, uh, project manager for Cumberland Farms is here. David Kelly, the project engineer from the Core States Group. Steve Severi, the traffic engineer. And Blaine Appleby, the area sales manager for Cumberland. They're here to be able to answer questions on the parts of the project that they, that they prepared. Um, I'm gonna keep this presentation pretty short, because I know a lot of it is, we've looked at a lot of it. I don't want to reiterate too much, uh, so it'll be pretty short, and then hopefully we'll have some given, taken, some discussion.
Okay, just remember, this, so this board did not hear your presentation.
I understand, I understand. But you have received a lot of information from planning. So the project before you tonight, as you said, is a site plan approval of a major project, and it is a major project because it serves gasoline. Um, a, there is a special permit to allow two curb cuts, and there was a special permit required to dispense gasoline. The convenience store itself is allowed as a matter of right with site plan approval. So those are the three issues before you this evening. And the site that we're discussing is the southeast corner of Main Street and Maple Street in Florence. It's before you on the screen as it sits today. The parcel of land is approximately twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine square feet of land. It does include the house to the left at the bottom of the screen that you see, um, and it includes the mobile station that's operated there for some forty years or so. The site is zoned general business, and the mobile station is currently closed, but that was the, is the current use, uh, of the site. The, basically, the project before you is, um, let me show you a few more views of the site. This is from Main Street, um, direct on. This is from Maple Street, looking over towards the Florence Savings Bank. And this view is from near the intersection, looking back at the, uh, service station and snack shop. The Cumberland Farms would propose a building similar to this. Uh, this is a thirty-six hundred square foot building. It is, um, it's clabbered siding, some stone siding, um, and it, the elevations of it are as follows. The bottom one is the front elevation that faces Main Street. The top one is the west elevation that faces Maple Street. The top one here is the east elevation facing down towards the Florence Savings Bank. And the bottom, of course, is the rear elevation that faces back towards the fire station. This is what the site proposal is, and basically, the proposal is for the store to be at the back of the property, and the pumps and the canopy to be up near Main Street. There are three pumps, which will have six dispensers. They dispense out of each side, but there are three pumps. The site layout has two entrances, one right here that is twenty-four feet wide off of Main Street, and one here that is twenty-four feet wide off of Maple Street. As a part of this project, if it were approved, Cumberland Farms would be closing the three other curb cuts that service the property now. Um, there's one approximately here, there's another one in here somewhere, and then there's one for the house back here. So they will be closing three of the five curb cuts that service the property. Also, as a part of the project, Cumberland Farms would be constructing an elevated sidewalk, commencing here and going back to the front of the store, would then cross into the store, and another elevated sidewalk here. They're also enhancing the crossings that currently, the curb cuts are serviced with curbing. These will be ramped down, cross, and back up, and will have appropriate signage for stopping and other directional information. So we believe that the site really enhances the pedestrian access to the site, both on the municipal sidewalk, which will be improved, and on the internal sidewalk. So we've taken great care to try to separate the pedestrians, bicyclists, from any traffic on the site. The, uh, open space is being enhanced in that there is currently seventeen percent of the site is open. That is being increased to twenty-six percent, a nine percent increase in open space, and basically, most of it is here. There is, right now, there's just a little piece of greenery right here on the, on the existing building. So the open space is increasing by nine percent, and the landscaping is being enhanced. Um, the landscaping plan shows, and you can read on your plan what each one of the, uh, the plants are, but it, the landscaping has been enhanced dramatically to provide some buffer between the road and the, what's going on inside the site. The current site is pretty much serviced with sheet drainage off the site into the city storm system. Um, there are completely new stormwater management system that would be installed. It's been reviewed by the city DPW, and they have given you their comments. Their comments have asked for some minor changes, which of course we'll do, um, but basically, they have accepted that project. The, uh, signs that are proposed are a monument sign, uh, similar to this. Uh, it meets the, uh, city's bylaw, and it is, um, will be placed up near the current monument sign. Um, the, uh, store sign is, and I guess I have to go back to. The store sign is this, I believe it is twenty-seven square, the lettering and the symbol are twenty-seven square feet, well within the wall sign allowed by the city. Um, and then there are the two small sidewall signs, twelve and a half square feet each, one right here and one right there. So basically, that is what the proponent is proposing to be built here. Um, we believe that what this brings to the center of Florence is over and above what is there now, or what might be there, is improved aesthetics. Clearly, the building is a better-looking building than what is there now. It brings greater pedestrian safety, in that the curb cuts are reduced by three, and greater vehicle, vehicle, uh, safety, in that the curb cuts are reduced. Um, it also increases the open space on the site by nine percent, and has enhanced landscaping, which will improve the looks of the project. The, I think one of the biggest assets of the site is the improved, uh, sidewalk network within the site, um, by elevating the sidewalks and allowing direct access from each city sidewalk, which they will also be enhanced, the direct access to the store through a continuous sidewalk, I think greatly enhances the pedestrian safety, enhances the pedestrian friendliness of the store, and really, as a safety matter, separates the pedestrians from the traffic that will be coming there for the purpose of, of purchasing gasoline. The stormwater management is certainly a vast improvement over what's been going into the city storm sewers. A lot of it is being captured on-site and dealt with on-site pursuant to your bylaws. There is greatly enhanced, uh, tank safety, in that obviously, the tanks that are there now will be removed, and state-of-the-art, safer tanks will be installed. And the, the last of the improvements really is the lighting. All of the outdoor lighting is proposed to be LED, which is, uh, one of the goals of the city is to reduce the energy use. These lights are the most conservative and, uh, cost-effective and energy-effective lights, uh, available. So they, all of the exterior lights will be LED, which is, in sustainable Northampton, is one of the goals of the city. So overall, I think that the, um, Cumberland Farms Convenience Store will redevelop a tough corner, or a corner that's been tough for a while. It'll improve the aesthetics, the health, health safety, and needs of the neighborhood. So I do believe that this would be a benefit to Florence. One of the issues that, um, we have discussed for a good number of months with the planning department is the issue of parking between the street frontage and the building. And as Mr. Gilson mentioned, we have been before the zoning board of appeals, and we have been before them to ask them for a finding that moving the parking from the side, um, which is right here, there is parking between the building now and Main Street, and moving that to here in front of the new building, we've asked them to determine that that movement of the parking will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the parking that exists now. And chapter forty-eight, section six of the state law says that the zoning board of appeals may make a finding that it is not substantially more detrimental to do that. Um, they have elected to continue that meeting, to look at some case law, um, so we are not yet permitted from them to do it. And as Mr. Gilson said, um, you may be a good decision independent of that if you elected to do so. But the reason that we needed to ask for that was that we are proposing to have parking between the building, right here, and Main Street. Um, and I know that's an issue with the city, it's an issue with, with, uh, the planning department, so I'd like to speak directly to the reasons that we believe this is a better plan, a plan that works better for the city, and a plan that works better for Cumberland Farms. And the first reason is vision. Um, the state fire regulations require that whenever a gas pump is in use, that the clerk at the console have control of that pump and vision of the refueling operation that's taken on. So the clerk has to be able to see what's going on out there and control the pump. So we have to have the windows and the clerk looking at the canopy and the pumps. So one reason is our own operation of the pumps, that we have to look out onto where the refueling is taking place. Um, the second is that those who come to the pumps need to be able to, um, access the store, and so the storefront is here, and those who come to the pumps can go to the store. If the store were along the road and the pumps in back, and the storefront in front, then one of the fuel would have to come out onto the front to come in. It's unacceptable to the retailer to have two doors, one in the front and one in the back, because then they can't monitor what's going on in the store, the clerk can't monitor the pumps, the front door and the back door behind him or her. Um, so it's really, for Cumberland Farms, it's a vision issue that they have to look at the pumps, and they have to also monitor what's going on inside the store. Um, the second reason, we believe, is nighttime safety. Um, if the store is up on the street, right on the, on the, on Main Street, and the pumps and the parking are behind it, the vision for nighttime safety is not great. Passersby is on Main Street, can't really see what's back there. Public servants, police, fire, can't really see what's back there as they drive by. So we believe that having the building blocking the pumps, um, is, raises some safety issues, especially in the evening. Um, and the third is, we think that this internal sidewalk system works the best. And if the building is here and the pumps are there, we can't, we have to get in the people across the travel lane here and into the store, it becomes problematic. We also believe that this is much more pedestrian-friendly, for a pedestrian to be able to come down the sidewalk, look, see the store, see in the store, makes a lot more sense. So we think it's a more pedestrian-friendly setup than having the back of our building facing Main Street. Um, and the third reason, or the fourth reason really, is simply aesthetic. Yes, we can try to do some things with the back of the building to make it, um, more pleasing, but if that's the back of the building that is facing Main Street, within a few feet of Main Street, we have issues with where do we put our cooling and heating and cooling devices, which are all up here? Where do we put our CO2 tank? Where do we put our gas meters and all of those things? Because it wouldn't be a service to the city to have all of those right up on, on, uh, Main Street. So we believe that for the city of Northampton and for Cumberland Farms, this is the best design to enhance pedestrian safety, to enhance the viability of the site, how it works, how it flows, and to provide the safety that's necessary and the, uh, basic flow that's necessary. The second issue that I'd like to discuss a little bit is the lighting plan. We have worked on it since we first submitted it. Uh, we have a new one in your packet. Tonight is, is different than the first one that was provided. It still does not meet the, the suggested standards of the city. Um, we strongly feel that under the canopy, a maximum of five-foot candles is not enough for the, uh, customer to operate and to see what he or she needs to be doing. Overall, your, um, one of your standards says that the overall, uh, foot candle average should not exceed two. I believe we're at two-point-one-one. So we are close, but we have not met it. The one that we're really having difficulty with is the maximum foot candles. The maximum allowed are five, and we have significantly more than that under the canopy. The purpose of your bylaw is to prevent glare and to prevent light trespass, all taking into consideration the convenience and safety of the citizens who might frequent the site. So we have produced what we think is a light plan that works, both for the customer who comes to the station, and also the passerby who is going to see the light. We have done everything in your bylaw for the shit, for the deflectors, for the shades, for the down casting, but we are asking that you consider, um, allowing some flexibility on the lighting plan. We've been around and looked. We've been around and looked at some other facilities, none of which have any precedent necessarily with you, but some of them are more, some of the gas station service doors we surveyed are more than what we're asking for, and your latest one, I think is Raceway, is, is less than what we're proposing. So, we believe this is a good plan. We believe it complies with your bylaw. We believe it complies with all of the ordinances of the city of North Hampton, except for the finding for the parking between the street and the building and the lighting plan. So, that's an overview, and I'd like to answer whatever questions you have, and, let's see where we go.
Your lighting levels here compared to the nearest service station we have, you're higher or lower?
What service station?
You saying?
I believe our, our maximum is higher. I, I don't know the, the average there. We simply took a reading under the, in a few places, under the canopy. Our canopy is more than theirs. It's less than Pride, probably about or a little more than, I think a little more than Hess.
Do you have, I don't see the lighting plan, I mean, I see an exterior lighting plan, but I don't see the detailed lighting plan that shows.
The detailed lighting plan is in your big packet.
Oh, I thought you said you had an updated one in here.
No, that packet is updated from what we first, when we first came in.
So, so this one is the new?
That one is correct. I, I have it on the screen, but frankly, you can't, you won't be able to read it on the screen. That is where, that is the plan of where the lights are.
No, what I'm talking about is when it shows the foot candles throughout the site.
I took it out because I think it, it's in the paper packet.
How, can you just say how high the elevation, when you talk about an elevated sidewalk, how, how high the elevation is?
Six inches. Six inches. Just like a curving, it's a curving, so. The, the reason for that is that painted ones don't work very well. You know, car, ignored.
But, just sorry, back to lighting, like, the only sheet I have for length is L1 dot one.
Correct.
Which does not show the foot candles throughout the site.
It's, it's a sheet before the architectural drawings.
What's the number on it? Which sheet is it?
Well, it's, it's LSI Industrial, L zero dash, and that's got a number, Rec4A1. Rec4A1.1 is the light level.
So, you're saying this is the current, what we have on this page is current?
Correct. And then in the booklet I gave you is the lighting consultant's explanation.
Right, so this is the one that, that has the 28s and the 32s and the?
That's correct. And we had a, quite a number of discussions with planning and trying to bring it in, and we've improved it some, but I did ask that we have the opportunity to come and make the argument that it is shielded by the canopy, it's shielded by the down. So, as far as light pollution going up, it will not. We believe that that plan is the safest and the best for the customer.
Questions from the board?
Are there any bike racks?
Yes, there, there is a bike rack to the right of the building. Uh, six. See, right to the right of the building on this picture, and there are six.
Well, I remember when we did Raceway.
Yeah.
Or whatever it's called.
Yeah.
There was the same controversy about it. You need to bring your lights down a lot. I'd be interested to know what exactly what you, what they could do.
They were at five.
Really, the maximum?
It's in the staff report.
Yeah.
This is in a.
And they have, they're having.
Compared to that one's out in middle of nowhere.
Well, as far as the night sky and stuff, it's important out there too. They, they have a level of 32.
Oh, there's 32, 28s, there's none.
Forty-four point one.
Yeah.
I just had a clarification. You said a, a special permit was required because it's selling gasoline?
Yes. Actually, yeah, I was gonna, Wayne, start that. Wayne, you wanna discuss why it's a special permit? It's not just because of the gasoline.
Right, well, it's, it's a gas station with or without convenience commercial that requires a special permit. And because this is sort of an expanded site covering new properties, they're not gonna be grandfathered under the old site. The grandfathering that they're asking from planning, from the zoning board, is about the parking in front of the building, but because it covers substantially more land than the old, the old site, they wouldn't be eligible for that for uses.
Right, I think, if I'm correct, a convenience store is allowed as a matter of right without the gasoline.
Well, we. I'm all fine with it. Retail is allowed by right.
Okay.
So, the use is, the definite.
Doesn't matter.
Service station with or without convenience commercial.
And that's what we are. And also the, we need a special permit for the second curb cut.
And the setbacks. Does the setback fall in the special permit as well?
No.
No, because, remember, there's no setback requirement here. The issue is we can't have parking in front of it, and that's what they're asking.
Yeah, we can, we can by right put the building as far back as we want, but we, under the, today's zoning bylaw, we cannot park in front of it. So, you know, so it's not a sec, and I believe that it's zero setback everywhere except the rear yard, correct?
This is for Wayne. The, the setback of the building has implications for the sustainability plan, though. Am I right about that?
Right, so, you, somewhere like downtown, this report is a maximum setback. The approach in general business is different. It's, it's what you just heard. You can setback your building as far as you want, but you can't have parking in front of the building. It is necessary to create a new stand-up there. Some might wanna build it 40 feet back of the plaza, that's fine, but not with the parking in front of it, absolutely, to make the area more pedestrian-friendly and have the buildings friendly.
And that's the finding that ZBA is?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Right, that's why, so then we need, ZBA approval and us to get this approved.
And ZBA's approval of the parking, if they did, doesn't mean you have to attempt this site.
If you don't get a finding from ZBA, are, do you know what you're?
Well, I, I, actually, I would, I don't think we should, what, what the ZBA does is outside of us, so I think we should look at.
Sure, it just seems like one.
Right, but the ZBA didn't decide.
Right.
So, they continued it, so, at this point.
Well, if the ZBA, if you don't mind, if, if they decide no, then this project can't be built, and I assume the gas station reopens and they go fish for another buyer, I guess.
Other questions from the board on the plan before we open the public comment?
Yeah, I do. You've got residential on at least two sides of the property, sort of.
I believe there is some upstairs, the birds.
And you've got upstairs residential, and that's gonna be, you've got your canopy at 14 feet, so.
Height.
That's into the second floor of that building that, that birds is.
I'm not sure of that, but you may be right.
Do you know what the height of the existing canopy is?
Could it take 14 feet?
So, you're not, make going any higher than the existing canopy?
If it is, it's gonna be within a foot or so. The standard height on the canopies is 14.
Okay, 'cause it also goes into the lighting levels, because some of the lighting levels are seen in the canopy, or 44s, which is.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, you know, it's showing zero at the lot line over toward bird, but it's still going to really change that corner based on that. You're also gonna have cars coming and going, you know, and the lights, the way it's gonna be good now are coming into, they, they show past the building into the residential pipe.
Right behind is the fire station, right?
Yeah, I, I was actually just to sweep to, behind the fire station on the street is where I was.
Just wanna make sure I have my bearings right.
Other questions from the board? Oh, just let me get my piece before you guys all raise your hand. We're all, get it, Jess, thank you, Mr. Collins. So, we're gonna open up the public comment. Public comment, for those of you who haven't been to the planning board meeting before, and like the city councilor said, school committee, where you addressed the board and you don't get a response, when possible, the planning board, or in some cases, the applicant, we will try to respond if we can to, to your concerns. I will say, I, you know, I will try to limit, there's a lot of people here wanna speak, I will try to limit you to three minutes, so I'm not gonna be too strict on it unless you go way over. The other thing to do is please try not to repeat something or somebody else said. That'd be great. All right, Pill, you had your hand up first. Sorry, Mr. Pill, you're gonna be there.
PC's gonna come anyway, it doesn't matter. It's, I'm Bill Dwyer, live at 39 Myrtle Street, and I'd like to actually speak to an issue that came up actually during the ZBA meeting, where I had asked a question about the, the regulation that Mr. McConnell cited, which was, which actually drives this whole project, which is why the argument that the building cannot be built up to the street is because of sightlines for the gas pumps. Well, and he was kind enough to actually provide us with a regulation. And regulation actually stipulates, yes, you do have to have sight of the pump, but not through a window. You don't have to have it through a window. And in fact, actually, over a thousand square feet, there has to be a dedicated attendant, not just the clerk. The clerk, in a 3,000-square-foot system, according to these regulations, there has to be a dedicated pump attendant monitoring the pumps and the transactions and the gas. And that can be done with video monitors. It doesn't require moving and jiggering the building and requiring parking in any specific way. That building can go right up to the curb, with the entrance being facing the street, the parking and the gas station can go in the back. Now, as to the safety issues, which, you know, the concern about visibility for emergency systems to see the, the going on, the fire station's behind there. If, if anything goes wrong, they're gonna have the fastest response of anyone in the city for any particular emergency, and it's not gonna be, and in fact, if it went on in the front of the building, it would be obscured from the fire station, and of course, it'd have to rely on the old standby of dialing 911. But the, so, it's, it's a little disingenuous to suggest that this whole system is being based on that one very important assumption, that they need the clerk who's doing the transacting and selling the lottery tickets and selling the cigarettes and all the, and the milk and everything else, also has to be able to have a visible sightline to the pump. That's actually in violation of the regulations, 'cause that, with a system this size, they can't have the clerk doing that. They have to have an attendant, at least according to these state regs that were provided by Mr. McConnell. So, I mean, I think, as you deliberate this and kinda consider where this is situated in the lot, he, I understand the impetus, I think the principal impetus, although it's not really fair for me to make this conjecture, but the principal impetus is to do what most retailers wanna do, is have, show the gas station in the front as a display, show the parking in front as a display, and then also retain as much display wall, interior display wall as you possibly can. They'll be allowed to do that part, but they won't be allowed to, I mean, if the building's required to be built up front, not to show off that it's a gas station principally for people driving down Route 9, who'll be seeing it for the very first time in their lives. Otherwise, everyone else in the community certainly know that there's a gas station back there. The other issues I wanted to speak to quickly was that a number of residents were here for the ZBA meeting, not aware that there was, this was gonna be continued on to the planning board, who commented, most of them all within a block or two, talking about, and, and I think Lucy Longstreth will speak to, to pedestrian traffic and such, so I won't be redundant there, but Councilor Jean Tacey also spoke about the concerns about the volume of, of residential and community pedestrian traffic in the area that clearly will be, will experience a difference. Whether it's dangerous or not, that's up to others to decide. But there's also the issue of the sightline is not just for the media, the butters, the people who live on Hillside Avenue. It's called that because it's on a hill that looks down on to this very site, and the light issues are really of critical importance. This will be the brightest object in the center of Florence. It will be a bright, shiny bug light, which is exactly what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to attract people to draw to it. I don't argue that. The fact remains is that the candle footprints that you're talking about, are they, I mean, your obligation, of course, is to determine not what's good for their enterprise of business, but what's good for the butters and the, and the community of the neighborhood. And then, so I will step back and get out of the way of Michael Pill, because I've already heard his rap, and this is, this is gonna hurt.
Now, Mr. Phil, I, you've been in front of this board before, and.
You don't want the three-hour treat, is it?
No, no, the one thing, we're, we're not a court, so, if you, the, the, you can remind us of the chapters and verse of the law, but none of us are judges. One of us may be a lawyer, two of us, one of us maybe is, so I just, but.
The rest do honest work?
Yeah, so, I guess that's, 'cause that's just all.
Okay, I do want you to have the citation for the regulation he just mentioned. It's Title 527 CMR Code of Mass Regulations 5.08, and Attorney Silver on the ZBA was kind enough to point out that, I believe the relevant subsection is subsection F, okay? And, and that's an absolutely fundamental point. It destroys the foundation of what's been presented to you, okay? But what I also want to address, and Ms. Longstreth will address it, is I, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the traffic study deals with vehicles, but completely ignores pedestrian traffic. And she and some of the other neighbors can describe to you from their firsthand experience the intensity of the pedestrian traffic in this area. And I respectfully submit that to wanna put this volume of traffic, 24 hours, with no consideration for the pedestrian traffic, and one of the things I learned was that apparently a lot of that pedestrian ta, traffic is school kids from JFK, that is a glaring hole that needs to be addressed. The other thing is, I would love to get my hands on that packet that's been handed to you, okay? I need time to see what's in it and to respond to it. In Mark Wabrowski's Handbook of Land Use and Planning Law, he specifically says, when the applicant provides new stuff at the hearing, neighbors should, and I am doing that now, specifically request that the hearing can be continued. You know, I am making a verbal public records request. I'll gladly pay for color copies, but I need that so that I can go through it and be prepared to respond to it. And indeed, the point of a public hearing is so folks in my position can know what's going on. And by the way, my compliments to Mr. Fiden, because North Hampton's the only place I know where as much is put online as is put online by the city, and I've been through all that, and it's now a gaping hole that I can't do that, and it's legally due process. It's also what I would call fundamental fairness, that we need the opportunity to go over that and possibly even have our own experts look at it. If nothing else, the citizens are entitled to respond to it, okay? Beyond that, I, believe it or not, I am going to sit down, be quiet, and let the neighbors speak, because they can give you the firsthand facts that I think make it clear why this project simply doesn't fit on this site. As one of them pointed out, it's a highway business in a general business district. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, just state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I represent, I'm sorry, I forgot, and Attorney Silver asked me that too. I'm here on behalf of Steve Shea, who's the trustee of the Timothy Shea Trust, and they own two properties that are abutting this site. Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. Hi, since everyone has said I'm going to speak, I'm going to speak. My name is Lucy Longstreth. I reside at 84 North Main Street in Florence, and I've lived in Florence for approximately 26 years of my life. Not gonna tell you how long I've lived. I will refer to myself as a reformed attorney. I am licensed to practice in two states, but currently, I'm a school teacher. I teach at JFK, and it's because of that that I'm here. I live in Florence, I work in Florence, I pretty much don't ever come downtown. Not any offense meant to the downtown area. I go through this intersection about 10 times a day, so do my students, and that's what I really want to bring to your attention. I did this at the zoning board as well. On any given day, the JFK gets out for a half a day or a vacation, pretty much most of its population that lives in the area goes. of its population that lives in the area goes pouring through that intersection, where Maple Street and Main Street intersect. The kids walk from the school, they come down Oak Street, they come near my house, they come down through that intersection, they head to Friendly's, they head to Byrd's, maybe Combi's, wherever, and they cross that very intersection. It is an extremely dangerous intersection. Why? Because it's the main way that people from the hill towns have access to downtown, to often Route 91, because they don't choose to go Bridge Road, because it backs up at Jackson Street. I think a lot of you are aware of that. So, because I've lived on that street for years, I hear the rush hour traffic. It starts at 7:00, doesn't start at 8:30, because it's mostly people working Cooley Dick, it's people who are working at local companies, it's people who work in public safety, and they work early hours. They get out early, too. Rush hour in the afternoon starts about 2:30, and that's when the kids are there. So you've got heavy traffic and a huge pedestrian population. The post office is at the opposite corner. People, I've seen elderly people crossing from the elderly home, and I can't remember what it's called, on South Maple Street, to go to the post office, very slowly, with canes, with walkers, with wheelchairs. We have residential housing that is housed with people from ServiceNet, many of whom are disabled, crossing that intersection. Just trying to give you a feel for it, because I live in it every day. We have people going to the Cup and Top, which is a toddler-friendly restaurant, so lots of little kids crossing that intersection. And then we have our Florence parades, the Halloween parade, the Christmas parade, and various other ones, Memorial Day Parade, where that street is shut down. It's so dangerous to have traffic going through there, and police officers are set at either end until the parades are over. Florence is a pedestrian town. I know we're part of North Hampton, but we walk. We walk everywhere, every day. We walk to the hardware store, the post office, kids walk. If any of you were to go there on December 22nd this year at 2:30 and hang out for a little while, you're going to be mauled over by a bunch of middle schoolers. I guarantee it. Usually, a police officer, these days, is positioned in that vacant lot to make sure that they're safe, or that the rest of us are safe. I just bring this to your attention, not because I'm anti-business or anti-development, I'm not. We need taxes in this community, my taxes just went up. I welcome the right business, maybe this is the right business, I don't know, but I want to bring to your attention the safety issues about the huge amount of pedestrian traffic going through. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Anybody else?
My name is Jody Nicholas. I live at 28 Keys Street, which is close to where they're proposing the store. And I don't believe that we should make special, give them a special permit for what they're trying to do, because this is the one spot in Florence that these permits were probably made for. I just don't believe that, in a space that special in town, that we should be letting them have extra lighting and have a building that's set back from the street to allow the parking. It's going to be open 24 hours a day, which means there are so many people that live in that area, they'll be hearing car doors all the time. And this, this isn't, in my eyes, a business that's for the common good. It's not a library, or maybe even part of the hospital, where I feel like I would allow a special permit to go through. I feel like it's just not the right business, especially seeing they're already right down the street. So, I'm fine with that business, but them moving, it doesn't seem like it's doing the public any good. It's maybe just doing them good. So, that's what I believe.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alana Aubrey, I live at 63 Maple.
I'm sorry, Alana.
Aubrey. I live just on the other side of the fire station, so I'm very familiar with that area, and I guess one question quickly I had has to do with the blue house that's there, is that to be knocked down as part of this project?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that. But the current Cumberland Farms, I don't know, is that also open 24 hours a day as well?
Yes, it is.
It is, okay. So, one of the pieces that nobody has mentioned is the Silk City Tavern being right across the street, and the flow, overflow of people coming from the bar at, you know, whatever time it closes, 2:00 in the morning, crossing the street to a typically very quiet, very, very quiet corner. I live right by the firehouse, I know all the sounds that come from the firehouse, I know exactly when they're on a call, when they're backing into the parking lot. There is very little space between where I live and that corner, and should that house get knocked down, there's to be a parking lot and very little, you know, the bay where the fire trucks come in, and then there's barely a fence in my front lawn. So what I anticipate seeing is lots of lighting, the, where the location of the two entrances are, I would agree wholeheartedly with the one on Maple Street, being ripe for lots and lots of accidents, not to mention increasing a huge amount of traffic onto Maple Street as opposed to staying on Route 9. There is something to be said about that side of Maple that feels very different than the other side of Maple. Once you cross Main Street, there's just a different sense of what happens. The business on that side of the street differs considerably from Byrd's. It's a very, very quiet strip of Maple. And to move the Cumberland Farms and the clientele, I buy gas at Cumberland Farms, I'm not, you know, suggesting anything other than that, but 24-hour accessibility, the parking lot area around the building, I would have a lot of safety concerns, because there are several parking lots that abut that entire area. I also know people who work in that building are very concerned about the overflow of pedestrian traffic as well as car traffic. So, I just would have a lot of concerns about the increase of populations at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 in the morning, and I would worry about safety considerably. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alex Johnson, and I live on 28 Keys Street, and I guess my concerns, my objections to the proposed plan is part emotional and part aesthetic. Florence is a beautiful village in a beautiful area, and there's been a lot of paintings painted of the area. One of the Florence diner, I don't know if there's going to be a painting made of the proposed place that we have on the board there. I'd love to see it if it was ever done. But I went to Cumberland Farms just the other night. It was late, I needed half and half for my coffee, and it was great that it was there. And it is there, it's already there. And the space next to it is vacant, it's been vacant for a while. I don't know if there's been any thought put into using that spot, expanding it, there wouldn't be much need for the construction crews to go too far from where they already have a store. It's also nice to know that Florence closes, for the most part, at a certain point in the day. 2:00 maybe is last call at Silk City. It's pretty late. I hear the overflow, too. I have my issues, I call authorities every once in a while, it's not so bad in the winter with the windows closed, but in the summertime, it's atrocious. But it is nice to know that, for the most part, the little village closes down after 2:00 in the morning, and this would sort of be like the noisy college roommate that stays up with his friends all night long, if this were to be put where it's proposed to be put. And emotionally, for me, that's, it's just going to hurt if it happens, and aesthetically, I can't think of a, I can't think of anything I'd rather not see in my town. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I'm John Gunther, I live on Meadow Street.
I'm sorry, John, your last name?
Gunther. I live at 27 Meadow Street. I think this is a really good example of a bad example. I'm not so much against the business per se as the site. It just seems like the old style we're trying to get away from, the strip mall feel to it. It shouldn't be rotated 180 degrees. And then, design first, sitting that way. So you would have a sign in front hiding all the air conditioning and ductwork, and a front door, of course, if you wanted to come in from the street, make it easier for pedestrian traffic. The parking on the side seems odd to me, because that wasn't really used as parking, that was car storage for repair work. So it wasn't people coming in to get a sandwich, the mini mall aspect of it was very modest, it was really a repair garage. I'm interested in knowing, are there permits for 24-hour? It was a concept I never had really thought about.
There's no special permit.
So any, any business could stay open in Florence 24 hours?
Yeah, it's noise issues that become stricter at night, but otherwise it's not.
Interesting.
Thank you. Thank you.
The planning board put restrictions on the area of the stop and shop gas station, I believe, they have to close it, they, is that part of the special permit process? So it is a restriction that could be made, but...
Yeah, reasonable, you know, reasonable conditions to address.
Okay, that's very nice. That wasn't clear.
So I'm not sure if I've ever heard, so what Franny mentioned was when the stop and shop put the gas station in King Street, the planning board at the time put hourly restrictions on it, so it's not open 24 hours a day.
They have, they can't open until 7:00, I believe.
7:00 more.
It's fairly inconvenient.
Yeah. So move on. So move on.
Hi, I'm Robert Ross, I live in downtown Florence on 40 Kaiser Street. I've lived here for quite some time, and I know the Kaiser's, it's properly pronounced Kaiser Street, not Key Street. I'd like to apologize, I had to leave to go to Emerson Bank, and I've lost my notes in the meantime. And what is the special permit for, can somebody, there's a separate special permit than the finding from the earlier meeting?
Yeah, the ZBA is determined whether or not there's a lot of parking in front of this building. A special permit is required because it's a convenience store in a general business district. With a two...
Which is not allowed by, is it a convenience store or a gas station?
Yeah, sorry, convenience store with a gas station.
So which, but which is it? Is it the combination of not allowed without a special permit, or one or the other?
It's the gas, it's the gas station with or without GB's commercial requires a special permit.
Okay, so...
Retail itself.
Seems like we've got a convoluted trail.
Yeah.
Because we asked for, they asked for, for further continuance of a non-conforming use, and then the use that they're asking for, the determination on making the non-conforming use larger and different, it's not an allowed use to begin with. It seems like this should be a large-scale project for review, and not part and parcel that to, to two separate boards. Feels like this should be all looked at one gigantic project, which it is, because it encompasses two parcels, downtown Florence.
But there's also, you know, DPW has to weigh in, if this was near Wethan, the Conservation Commission would weigh in, I mean, there are reasons why there are different boards, they handle different aspects of zoning, and we have to be, the planning board, the ZBA have a different purview, the CONSCOM has their purview, the historic district had to sign off on the knocking down of the blue house. So, it'd be nice if everybody came in one big meeting, but...
No, but large-scale projects are treated differently.
So this, this is still a major project for site planning. So, in essence, the boards are independent authorities, for them to go forward, they need the finding from the zoning board, and the two special permits from the planning board, and the site planner approval from the planning board. So even if the board, I can't remember when you came in, even if the board signed, voted on all those permits, if the zoning board didn't issue a permit, they couldn't go forward, and vice versa. If the board voted against the permits, the zoning board approved it.
So they need approval from both boards.
Right.
Similar to projects where the CONSCOM and the planning board both have to sign off.
So who will have to make their, who will have to jump first? Can you make, can you make your determination without, without that? Well, okay. Back, I was, I was the layman that made the term earlier that this is a general, this is a highway business being squeezed into a general business area where it really doesn't belong. And it's really disheartening that North Hampton has taken greater care in preserving how development has been done on King Street, where we were preserving walkways on what was the highway business zone. And here we are in downtown Florence in the center, a key area in downtown Florence, which is a walkable village. And this, this project just does not lend itself to this area in downtown Florence. Start buildings that are adjacent to this project, they, you know, granted, they've picked a building that might be more palatable, it's a Cape-style building, but it really isn't indicative of any of the buildings that are in this area, it's not going to really blend with the architecture that's there now. There's no reason why the building couldn't be further, further, closer to the lot line, and they could do something different, but they seem unwilling to do that, except to insult our intelligence and tell us they're going to put the building backwards if they can't do it the way they want to do it. So it's very disheartening. But the things, the key things I would like to look at if the project does get approved is the lighting, which is nine times what that they propose, nine times what is allowed by our zoning. Their signage should be backlit, it would be much better if it wasn't backlit, if it was lit from the ground, so that it wasn't blowing throughout the village. I have problems with being a 24-hour location, especially in this location, adjacent to Silk City, which kind of is a disturbance at 2:00 at night with people still out into the street and dispersing. But I think this will work as a beacon for those people, and will end up with more hangabouts and loud noise in downtown Florence at this time of, I think if they, the two businesses together will cause problems. The other thing is, I know they have slated to have a red box out front, and if it's a 24-hour store, and you want to sell videos or rent videos, why can't you do them within the walls of your store? Why do you have to have another sign on the front of your building selling videos? If, if videos were, I mean, obviously, it's a calling, it's another thing to get people in the door, and frankly, as a business model, if you wanted to, if you want those customers to buy other things besides the videos, you'd like them to come into your store and not stand outside on the sidewalk and rent their videos, I mean, it's just another, another piece of light pollution that we'll have. There's no provision for snow storage on this plot, that means that they're going to be responsible for trucking the snow away. I don't know if there's going to be any guidance put down for a timely manner for doing that. The lot that they have now is very constricted, and they have had large piles of snow there for a long period of time, including putting it on the sidewalk, pushing it towards the sidewalk and breaking the one piece of greenery that they did have, which was a city tree on the sidewalk in front of their building. These are all things to consider. I think this is a serious project, and it shouldn't be treated lightly, and there should be a lot of consideration before any permits are granted. I think that these applicants will probably, will live down a path, thinking that this was going to go through a lot more smoothly than you might expect. We've worked hard for a long time in Florence to make it a real community, you know, where you can feel at home.
I'm just curious about your last statement. The applicants were led down a path where they thought the approval...
Well, it's, I'm sorry, you weren't prepared for the last hearing, but their attorney was taught, like he's met with the DPW and met with the planning board, and everything was fine, and this was going to be fixed in this meeting, and that was going to be fixed in that meeting. And so I just want you to know that it's not what we brought to downtown Florence.
Well, you know, just so you know, an applicant, you know, we can get an applicant who wants to put a skyscraper there, but, and the applicant can say anything they want, but they do have to go through the boards and...
Oh, I understand. I have a right of...
I don't think they've heard anything from this board that has made it look as if this is going to be an easy process for them, so I'm not, that's confused me, so...
Sorry.
It shouldn't have, legally.
Yes.
No, I, I understand. There's no provision for bike, there's no bicycle rack on this project either, as I saw. Fair? Sorry. Thank you.
I'm from South Main Street in Florence. I've lived there my whole life, and it's just, you know, people have said the idea is this is a, Florence is a village, and this is, this is the center of our village, and it just doesn't belong. Something that hasn't been addressed is the idea of the truck traffic. You know, I know the trucks that need to go to a convenience store, and not to mention the gas trucks that are going, going near, the truck delivering the cigarettes, the truck delivering, you know, six different brake trucks, 12 different, you know, potato chip trucks, and their grocery trucks, all trying to maneuver through that intersection. their grocery trucks, all trying to maneuver through that intersection with pedestrians trying to walk around. I don't think it's safe. Thank you.
Anybody else have a problem? A chair, oh, what, Mr. McDonald's, is that you?
Yeah. If I could just respond to a few of the comments. The, as far as the comment regarding the viewing the gas pumps, Paul Wilson's been with Cumberland Farms for about nine and a half years. And he tells me that they have never been approved by a fire department to have a clerk watch by video. I don't want to say it can't happen, but basically they have never been approved for that and their policy is to watch it more carefully than that. So that's their take on what needs to be done and that's part, not all, and I don't want anybody to think that's all the reason that this plan is here. That's part of the reason, is to view the pumps. We agree there's pedestrians in the area. We agree that at times there's a lot of them. And that's the reason that we took great care to see that we could close this curb cut, this curb cut, this, we're reconfiguring one of these, but closing one of these and closing the one that enters the house. So yes, the proposal that we have before you tonight is a lot safer than what's there now. We're going to properly repair the curb cuts so that they meet the city's desires for where they do cross. We're going to put an elevated sidewalk all the way down here so that pedestrians who come along here can stay on a sidewalk and come down here and go to the building without interacting with the pumps or the parking. And the same on the other side. So I think that the, and people may be against the business being there and that's fine, but I think to suggest that we haven't taken into consideration the number of pedestrians and trying to make it a lot safer for them, we certainly have. And that isn't just because that's what the city would like us to do, but it's because it's extremely important to a business that the people who come there are safe and interact well with the traffic. So we understand there's pedestrians there. We understand they're there now. We understand that they cross the intersection. But within our site and within the city sidewalk, I believe we've done what we can to make this pedestrian-friendly and safe. The, as far as the snow storage, the plans do deal with snow storage. We love you what will happen, that it will be stored on site and it will be removed within 24 hours. If there is not a spot on site, because we have a winter like last winter, it will be removed within 24 hours of the storm event, which is what the plans provide for.
Are you sure where you're going to store it on the plan?
I do not, no, I don't believe-
You get C3.
But it's on the, if you fill the actually area where it's stored.
No, because if there's-
The note is on C3.
And obviously-
There's no actual location.
Yeah, we do not fill a location.
No one on C3.
Right. So it's only where you're going to store it on the site. It doesn't show on the planning board.
It's secret.
It just says you're going to store it, but it doesn't say where.
It's just going to be stored at whatever location it had you fucked up.
Right, it's plowed up, it's stored. And if it's a little bit, it would sit in a corner if it interfered with parking or traffic or pedestrian flow on the sidewalks and it's removed.
Well, I guess the reason I'm curious is because the only place I see where you're going to store it on your proposed planted buffer, which I don't think is where you want, we would want you to put it. Or it's going to go in parking spaces, which I don't think is where you want to put it.
Well, I don't think it's where the city would like us to put it either, but if there is no place, depending on how much there is, it will be removed. If you want a specific site, we can certainly amend the plan to designate that.
Yeah, what would you, something we'd like to see on the plans, where you're going to store the snow?
So I believe that the project is pedestrian-friendly and we've done what we can to protect the pedestrians who come onto the site and who actually, who pass by, who don't come onto the site, but who pass by by making, closing the curb cuts and making the crossings at the curb cuts properly signed and properly taking out the actual curbs and making them sloped as the city prefers. One thing I didn't make certain earlier was the obvious, I think it's obvious, but the Cumberland Farms store just down the street will be closed if this is permitted. And it will be deed restricted, that it will not be a convenience gas station. So it would be sold, it would be used for some other purpose, but it would not be a convenience gas station. As far as this attracting a whole lot of traffic, we certainly hope that business is good. There's no question about that. But if you take a look at the traffic report, something, and Steve can comment on it if you'd wish, but the statistics show something around 65% of the traffic that comes to a Cumberland Farms store is going by anyways. It's pass-by traffic who stops on their way to work for a cup of coffee, stops on their way to work for a newspaper or a sandwich, whatever. So these stores generally don't generate much traffic.
That would mean 35% is new traffic, so I mean, that's the flip side of that.
Well, or existing, somehow existing, yes. I mean, frankly, we obviously wouldn't be building this store if we weren't hoping it would be service more customers than the other one. But part of it is to sell more product to the same customer also. But of all uses, very few people, according to the traffic engineers, get in their car and say, "I'm going to go to Cumberland Farms." Now certainly, somebody who needs gas could very easily say, "I need gas, I want to buy at Cumberland Farms, I'll go out of my way to do that." And that would be part of that perception.
So you brought up the traffic study. It has a 1% growth rate in it. Is that common?
That seemed, that seemed pretty shy from my experience.
I guess I can answer that.
Steve Severio from Pussonon.
Hi, I'm the author of the Traffic Impact Report. And what we base those projections on for future growth are statistics that we get from the, from MassDOT. They have permanent count stations across, throughout the region that we can look over time and see how traffic trends have changed. You know, there are factors that influence this, increasing population, workers, you know, increasing population in the workplace, increasing ownership of vehicles. Those are all upward influences on vehicle miles traveled. But the recent trends are for those things to be actually decreasing. So when we actually look at that data, we see that if we were to use those factors as they come out of the data, we would be projecting negative growth in traffic. So we tend to err on the more conservative side where we assume some amount of growth, even though the statistics indicate otherwise. And that's, the 1% is consistent in what's being used industry-wide for this region at the moment.
And we've heard a lot of comment about pedestrian safety and the concern of the junior high. Your three-year history is showing no pedestrian accidents.
Correct, yeah.
Are you sure of that?
That's, within the data-
Did you check any of our local records?
We haven't checked local police records, but you know, the data that we use comes from the registry motor vehicle, so that gets reported from the police departments to the registry. So I mean, that's our standard way of assessing safety.
Okay. Any questions?
My question is, what exactly are we being asked to do?
So three purposes. The having more than one curb cut is a special one.
Correct, curb cut.
The use itself, the gas station with or without convenience commercials, because it's with, so the use and then all the details of the use.
But the location of the building, sort of design issues, is that up to the-
No, you have to, the parking in front of the building, that's the zoning board's use. But the overall use, you look at the use in context. The use is as, for example, one of the criteria you should do when you go through everything is compliance with the city's master plan. It's one of the secondary criteria. So when you consider the use, you're going to use as it's laid out here. And you consider, does that meet the master plan?
And that would include the, some of the aesthetic issues around having a building close to the, closer to the street.
That's correct. The character of the area is important.
Right.
We don't have any purview over, for example, building material. We can't say brick.
But location of building.
That we have, yes. Right.
Mike, what's the wording relative to the Village Center and Sustainable Plan?
So the big goal that's relevant here is goal LU2, create and preserve high-quality built environments in the downtown and village centers. And then it goes into a little more detail, but not a lot more detail. Make sure that downtown village centers are accessible, but most is the goal. There's not a lot of guidance there.
But because it's in a sustainability plan, we can use that to guide as to whether or not to approve a special permit.
Current position historically for architecture, city buildings, and it's not just the buildings with the context that I'm sure is.
So the special permit, I mean, back to Catherine's question, the special permit basically comes down to the question of, does the use of that site fit with what we think should be there? That's really the criteria.
And, just be clear, any use as presented here, so you could hypothetically say, "No, you're turning this down as laid out here," without having any prejudice against if they reverse the building on their initiative. So you're saying the way it's shown here, not necessarily a service station.
Right, procedurally, just because what you mentioned, turned down without prejudice means they can come back. Straight turn down means they can't come back for two years.
Can't come back to the same project anyway. So even if you just turned it down, it could come back because you're really a different person. There's more setting a mess than saying it's enough.
Is there, sorry, just one more question. The fact that there has been a gas station here which has been shut down for, I don't know how long, does that create a kind of an expectation that this should be a gas station?
Well, certainly a gas station is grandfathered. So the gas station under mobile ownership or anybody else could come back any, you know, as long as they're actively marketing it, is grandfathered. And that's why they're at least eligible or asked for this. Parking in front of the building wouldn't be permitted if this was a vacant site because the service station's there, the zoning board could allow it parking in front of the building, and you all could allow it. So it gives them the opportunity, this project, to not put right to the power.
And if I could, to be clear, I believe the gas station can open tomorrow as it sits.
That's correct. So it's two years unless they've abandoned the use, as long as they're actively marketing.
How long is it going to shut down?
I don't need to, if they're actively marketing it, they don't lose their grandfather name.
Sorry, Mr. McDonald, do you have one more thing since somebody else comes up?
Yeah, what I wanted to do because she raised the question was, in the packet that I gave you, I did set out the site plan criteria and how we met that and the special permit criteria and how we believe we met that.
Catherine, you've only shown some of that, though.
I showed the one that I thought were relevant to this project. You may feel others are, but I showed, I did the one that I thought were relevant. So I'm happy to discuss those if you want and just draw your attention to them. But basically, for the site plan, the purpose of site plan approval is to minimize adverse impacts of development, to promote development, which is harmonious with surrounding areas, to assure drainage, safe access, safe and efficient vehicular and pedestrian movement, adequate parking and loading spaces, public convenience safety, and adequate consideration to abiding owners. And we believe we've done that. We believe that the project definitely improves the safety, improves the drainage, the storm water, improves the access, and improves the vehicular safety. So I think that this project definitely does that. We've attempted to improve the landscaping, to address one of the neighbors' thoughts, the one from behind on the other side of the fire station. I think having the store where it's proposed here shields her much better from the activities of the store than if we were to pull the building up and have the, nothing between the pumps, the parking, and the fire station. But that's my opinion of how this will play out. Once again, we are providing, increasing the open space.
Okay. I do want to speak.
Yeah, okay. And I'd just ask you to read tabs two and three. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I just want to reiterate what Mike said, is section three of what we were handed today, reports to lay out all the special permit criteria. It's missing several critical ones, so board members should refer to the staff report for the full criteria.
The, two points. One, about the issue of nine previous projects that have not been approved by fire departments. I'm not sure how many of those actually presented plans saying we want to put the pumps in the back.
I'm sorry, that was in nine years.
Nine years, oh, in nine years, how many, how many projects, or, actually, I'm not allowed to address you, so I'm sorry. But that being said, I think what's more germane is whether a plan that does feature monitors as opposed to having to see through a window should be represented to our fire department and see what our fire department says. I think that's more relevant, whether it happened over nine years is not germane because the regulations simply specify that you have to be able to see it. And the other thing, those used as a point of persuasion was that the fact that the, what will become a empty or derelict building system, part of the comfort you're supposed to gather from that is that it will be, it will be precluded by deed restriction from becoming another gas station or a convenience store, which is great on one hand, but if you think about it, it's, that is rendered a 21E site. It is, it is, it's a tough property to flip for something else. And that means it'd be pretty challenging for someone to think of an imaginative way to renew that system and turn it, if they can't turn it into a gas station, there's going to be a little impetus to try and flip that property and turn it into something else, because there's a lot of cost associated with that. And so as such, the thing is, we're not gaining anything. We're actually losing something and picking up, we're losing one derelict spot and giving up another. And the reason this spot's so appealing principally to a place that sells gas is because other people looked at it and it's a difficult project to develop because of the 21E issues, I'm guessing. I don't know that for a fact, but I'm guessing that's part of the impetus. So in thing, you know, if we're asked, if we're invited to consider that holistically, I wouldn't have invoked it otherwise, but that was as part of the point of persuasion. Then if we're, I think you should consider all the ramifications as far as that goes. And Florence, where the convenience store is located now is definitely clearly more appropriate than likely this, which is literally, it is the epicenter. It's dead center. If you were to stick a pin in a map, it would go right in the middle of that lot when you try to identify the center of Florence. So I mean, obviously, and I know for a fact that this, you're aware of that and this is probably going to inform your decision ultimately, but just laying out context.
Yep, Mr. Ross, and then somebody else, over here.
I don't know if I'm allowed to come up and add to that. I can hit people. Yeah, I, about the pedestrians being hit, I believe the pedestrians have been hit on their own sidewalk in front of their own store. I think there's a notable case locally lately or self, here in Silver, somewhere locally, where a man lost his leg. And that's why they have large ballards in front of Cumberland Farms stores throughout the area. Cars from crashing into it. Does the man kill, Chickity also. And I do want to ask, it says that it's safer, but I know they've narrowed the curb cuts, which is great, but I can see where you enter from Maple Street that if somebody was parked at the pumps, it's actually, on the Main Street, it's actually hard to get around that car. The way, it almost looks like you almost go under the canopy to enter, enter into the parking lot?
Twenty feet, so it's possible.
Twenty feet total. I am concerned about this being so close to the, to the corner or the back. Where does the traffic go when it backs up into the intersection coming into this, into this building? Now the fire department has signed off, but what, you know, what does, it's already difficult to take a left-hand turn both ways on Main Street. Sometimes it takes two traffic cycles to get through the, because there's no left-turn arrow. So with this there as a major attraction, I think it's going to change that dramatically. And I think that warrants some study. I know in other projects that we've put a burden on the applicant to improve an intersection that might be a problem and this is something that should maybe be looked at, whether it should be turn arrow installed or that way, if the project does go ahead. And my final question is, for the moment, if we're looking for three special permits and finding, does it go with the master plan? It seems to be a long ways off. I mean, if it's not, it's not a by right project, so it really deserves a careful consideration. a careful consideration.
Good evening, Steve Shea. I'm Steve Shea, successor trustee of Timothy H. Shea Trust, which owns property adjoining on Maple Street and Main Street across from the proposed project. I wasn't going to speak at this meeting, but I just have a few things. I am concerned about the canopy lighting. I'm concerned about the 24 hours a day aspect because there are TAD apartments, as a member of the board brought up, immediately across from this in the birds block, right at canopy level. There are other apartment units, actually condominium units, in the former Everybody's Building across the street. There are, there are four units there, while only two of them face Main, Main Street. And there are other, I'm going to say six housing units besides service net down north Main Street, just past Coven Top, that will be impacted visually by the 24 hours aspect. And, but, most of all, I'm just concerned that it's going to turn the center intersection into a wasteness of cars trying to enter and leave Main Street. As it is, it's very busy there during rush hour, during many times of the day. And as Councilor Tacey mentioned, I don't know if it was in this meeting or in the previous meeting, even the current Cumberland Farms site further east on Main Street often presents a challenge when traveling down Main Street for cars trying to exit Main Street into Cumberland Farms and exit Cumberland Farms out of Main Street. And adding those, I don't know what you call them from a traffic engineering standpoint, when something enters or leaves the roadway, adding all those, putting them down into an already very busy intersection seems to be problematic to me. And that's it. My final comment is Cumberland Farms Corporation is proposing, I believe it's at 3,400 to 3,800, I can't see, square feet in the store. I don't know how many square feet they have in their existing site, but the adjoining vacant space, I'm going to say adds another 1,200 to 1,500 square feet that they already have potentially available to them for their business if they want to expand in their existing site, which I believe would bring them close to 3,000 just at their current site. That's from a more global perspective. And finally, the existing non-conforming use of the lot as a service station, which has been a service station for 40 years, I believe, this may be a technicality, but it's not, it may be a parcel, but it's currently two different lots. And so I believe the board has discretion on this, but when you take the base station, which is the store for the service, you have gas pumps outside, and then you have a store, and the store is where the, where some of the transactions take place for the, for the gas transactions. I believe that counts as a service station. And by expanding the retail site onto that second lot, the Butto's House Lot, isn't that bringing in a second lot that doesn't fit with the existing non-conforming use as a service station? I don't know if that's the case, I'm just throwing that out there. Those are all my thoughts.
Just so you know, the whole, the, we don't rule on the existing non-conforming use of the VDA. So that won't be the part of our decision.
Okay. But Steve, that's just, if I can just explain, because he's my client, that's why the gas station is completely discretionary, and yes, it's true, somebody could reopen within the time limit the existing gas station, but that cuts absolutely no ice, it gives them no legal expectation and absolutely no legal right to have a special permit to completely demolish that building and erect a new gas station, not only on the one that the present occupies, but on additional land. And I'm assuming in a city as sophisticated as this, you're well aware, not only is it their burden to meet all your criteria, they can meet all your criteria, and you still have a perfect legal right to exercise your discretion to say, in your judgment, this is not in the best interest of the community, and this gas station should not be put here. Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to hear a little bit from the board. You know, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard a lot of public comment, there've been a number of issues raised, some of which the applicant will lap through the results might, not to mention ours having the ability to read the folder that they give. Some of the things we've heard about, snow storage, good truck traffic, light levels, the building setback, pedestrian safety.
24 hours.
24 hours, buffering for the neighbors. So there's a number of issues just inherent to this, irregardless of when we have a chance to review what we've heard from the, the red binding thing we've heard from the applicant. So I'd like to ask the board, how do we proceed? Do we proceed? Do we think, as, because we know there are two special permits involved in this, there's a lot of criteria associated with us approving a special permit. Number one, which is, do we believe that the use proposed by the applicant is fit for that site? So I'm curious what people think. Andrew?
Frankly, I'm, I'm prepared to say that I don't believe it's a, it's a fit use for the site and to vote on that tonight. And if the vote goes the way I think it should go, then that will draw a line under it and we can move on.
Mark?
I was going to say, I was at the technical review when this was initially presented, and it was presented in the context of against what exists now or what used to exist. And in that context, I love this, this is, it's great, you know, it's more pedestrian friendly, there's more green space, we're cutting curb cuts and so forth. So as compared to what's there, that's good. But then stepping back, and in the context of its use and where it is, in addition to the, the technical things like the lighting and the snow storage and the 24 hours, so forth, to me, this looks like, it feels like a much better version of the pride station on the corner of King and Damon Road. But this isn't the corner of King and Damon Road, this is downtown Florence Village Center. And to me, I can't get past that, and I'm, I can't vote for that, and I'm, as it's presented now.
Let me understand that if we were voting for a service station to go in there now, I wouldn't, that, I would have clear reason to vote against that. So that's the sort of.
A service station, just gas station?
Gas station. And so I regret that there is one there now, and I realize it could open tomorrow and become, you know, pumping gas station all over again. But I look at this as an opportunity not to do that in some ways, and that's, that overwhelms all my other lists here. You know, it does, moving it from the location it currently is and closing that and making that a problem property to clean up and sell, and putting it here where the term that we're looking for is you're increasing the density of turning movements, you know, because you're turning in and out right near an intersection. I think the lighting, you know, it is, it is a, and so I'm, I'm lined up with my, my fellows here, it's because it is the very corner that you would like for something very different happening. And so, you know, I, this is, this is what we do, we try to make things that we want to happen.
Brendan?
I think they've taken one of their standard plain vanilla plans and tried to chew on it.
Yeah, under the seventh criteria of special permit, we're required to look at sustainability plan, and this doesn't conform no one's, whatever, what's in the sustainability plan.
Totally agree, if it fits in with the master plan, it doesn't fit on that side. We'd vote against it.
No, I, I agree. I mean, I, I know we just went through the rezoning of King Street, and he couldn't even put this gas station the way it's proposed in King Street up to the bike path. It would have to go past the bike path, past Coven Shop, because it wouldn't even fit an entranceway on King Street. And if we can't make it something like this fit on King Street, I just can't see us putting it in the middle of Florence. So I'm prepared to vote against it as well. So.
May I make one, may I make one comment before?
Uh, well, one second.
Okay.
Wayne, because there are two special permits in the site plan, we, we have to vote individually on all three, you can, you can vote on them together.
Because in essence, that's how you're viewing it, is it's.
I don't think it's fair to sound if you say you can change the lighting, if you have a place for the snow, or if you do, I just.
Right. Very often, we get plans that when they come to us, we don't like. And through the process of conditioning and working with the applicant, we can make them to the point where we think they're, 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 they're good. I just don't see how it's possible.
All in waste time.
Yeah, with this particular.
You waste their time.
Mr. McCall?
Yes, yeah, and I appreciate that. You know, obviously, if it's lighting or something, that can, we can try to satisfy, so I appreciate that, that comment. But I do want to make sure that, that the board understands that the only alternative that decision, and please, I haven't set it up till now because I don't want it to be perceived as a threat, but the only alternative, if that's the decision, is to reopen this as a gas station. Because we can't, I mean, as much as we might like it, nobody's going to come along and buy it to build a brick office building with stores on the first floor, offices on the second, and housing on the third, perhaps. I mean, that's not going to happen. And I think, I know that it will reopen as a gas station. To me, for the citizens of North Hampton, yeah, you have a choice between that and something that's better, but not perfect. And so I just ask you to consider the fact that it will reopen, which does mean that there's two gas stations within 100 yards of each other. Whether it continues or not, I don't know, whether somebody does come along, I don't know. But it was our thought when we presented this, that this particular project is so much closer to the sustainability study, so much closer to stormwater management, pedestrian flow, everything, that it was a huge improvement over what was there, and that's why we think that it should be, it should be at least looked at carefully and approved. If the answer is, we don't care, open the gas station, have a nice day, then that's fine. I don't, my point is that I don't think that's the right thing for Florence, or the right thing for the citizens who travel by there, and the citizens who live there. So that's, I'd ask that you consider that.
I have a question. I think I heard you say that you were going to take up the old tanks and put in new tanks that were safer.
Correct.
So why would it be, in your opinion, that no one else would be willing to take up those old tanks?
Oh, I, I'm not assuming that they wouldn't be. I, I was trying to.
So why would it be only a service station that it could ever become if you could take care of cleaning it up?
We don't believe it needs cleaning up. It's just that this, the tanks that are there are not state-of-the-art, so if this project were to go forward, they have said, we will take those existing tanks out and put in state-of-the-art tanks. Doesn't mean that these aren't functioning fine, it's just their company policy.
So I'm still trying to understand why, in your opinion, that only a service station could ever go in.
Because right now, that's what is allowed, and I don't believe that somebody could.
Oh, I'm not talking about the one there. I mean, you were saying that no one would ever build on that building, and I thought you were trying to intend, indicate to me that there was some contamination of the site.
Oh, no, no. I think one of the speakers spoke of 21E. We have no reason to believe that this site or the old site has any 21E.
Okay, thank you, I just need to understand that.
Good. It's good. All clear? All right, sorry, Miss, Long, Stroud?
Long Stroud.
Long, sorry, sorry.
I was just going to address Ms. Bruce's point.
Well, no, I just say, so we, we close follow-carrying, so we, we're no longer, I know you had your hand up just one minute.
Okay, fine one.
So I think we were all pretty clear, so I would like to motion. Brendan, go, Brendan.
Go ahead.
I moved it and rejected application for major special permit with site plan for Cumberland Farms, 100 Main Street Florence, MAP IDs 23A, 67 and 68.
And special permits or just the second? Pardon? Are you doing a special permit as well, or just the second?
Special permit and.
Special permit and site plan.
And site plan, I'm sorry.
And I think it was.
It only says special permit on there.
I think it was unanimous second, so.
We all seconded.
Everybody seconded.
I did.
Maryland. Any further discussion? All right, so the motion is to deny, so a vote on this is to deny the permit. So all in favor of the denial? All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, but you know.
No, I think.
I'll tell them.
Frankly, I think all the people who spoke to Florence, who are with the master planning that they had in mind.
No, I'm saying.
All right, everybody, we have another hearing, we have, we're recording, it's an hour and 20 minutes late, so if you guys can take the conversation outside, it'd be great.
That could be my license.
We got another hearing.
Yeah, gentleman and a scholar.
Oh, I told her, there's a CD in a folder.
Yeah, the CD in the folder. That's where it is. Flirt out. Nobody's here for you.
I don't care. I thought everyone was here for space.
You guys all set? Uh, yeah, I think it's Logan here, yeah.
from the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals for a project that would contain two new buildings at Mr. Foote's property on Industrial Drive for the use of storage buildings. And I'd like to run through the PowerPoint presentation for you. First slide is, is the face of the building with your back towards Industrial Drive and the office space to it, being proposed. Oops, wrong button, sorry. So, what is being proposed is two buildings on the plan that are before you. Building nine is a 10 by 200-foot storage building, and consistent with the other storage buildings on the property. And building 10 is a 65 by 115-foot building, which is a controlled climate building for storage units, so that they are heated in the wintertime and cooled in the summertime. Oops, wrong button again. Overview, this is the coke plant. Diagonal across is the existing Spaces for Rent facility with the cul-de-sac roundabout within the industrial park building there. These are the plans that I'll quickly go through. They're kind of small, but in a little bit light on the PDFs or the PowerPoint. There currently are eight buildings located on the property that are out there today. Kind of give you a bigger picture here. Building one, which contains the office, which is straight off of the street, building two, and the remaining buildings on the property themselves. The parcel is just under nine acres in size, contains two parcels that were purchased by Mr. Foote over the years from the city in association with the development of the industrial park. Mr. Foote has been there for, since 1974, since 1974 in the industrial park. Further on in the slides, I've got some enlargements of the areas, because they're kind of hard to see, so I'll kind of skip through these kind of details. This is building two. Building one, where the office is, is right here. Industrial Drive is to the right, and this is the 10 by 200-foot storage unit being proposed here. The doorways for the individual units will be located between building two and building nine, which is the proposed building in this area here. The roof runoff is all sloped to the rear into downsides and gutters into a stormwater basin, which is located in the rear of the building itself. This is a picture of it. The building would be in this green grass area here. Building to the right is building two. The new building nine would be located here.
Are the tree buffer, are those, the trees remaining or...
Yes, no, the tree that you see right here is remaining.
No, the standard trees remain?
Yes, they're all remaining.
Right, so that'll be the buffer stayed between you and your neighbors.
Correct, correct. If you look at the plans, the trees are actually on the butter's property. So, they're staying. They're staying. This is building 10, in the rear of the site. This is the controlled air facility. A little different than the other storage units, because you don't have all these little doors that you enter your unit from in. You enter one main door, which is accessed here, and inside the building are hallways with units off of it. So, this building only has two doors, an entrance door here, and a fire eat grass door here, secondary access for fire protection. So, once somebody rents a unit within this building, they would come in, park their vehicle here, unload, and go inside the building and use their storage container for whatever they would like to.
How many units are inside that one?
Inside that one, it's gonna be 70 units total inside. And they range from 5 by 10 to larger sizes. People, you know, have various needs, and there's different sizes for it. This building, unlike the other one, has a ridge or a peak. So, down the center of it is the ridge of the building, and the roof runoff from this goes to the east or to the side, is collected into downsides and goes into a stormwater basin designed over here, which we got permitted from the Conservation Commission tonight. This side goes into another stormwater basin here. This new pavement area goes into a, what is known as a bio-retention area, that complies with DPT's stormwater management policy, that filters what they call TSS, or total suspended solids, out of the rainwater from pavement areas, and filters it before it ever discharges towards the resource areas or the wetlands, in this case being over here and over this section here. And this is a picture of where the building 10 would be, in this area here.
And again, so none of the trees are coming out?
Uh, some of the trees in this area, yes, are coming out. This property, when it was purchased, let me go back to the slide, has a deeded buffer of 50 feet from the abutting property to the south. And I guess this plan really doesn't show it, but there's a deeded tree buffer, so we're 50 feet...
Yeah, it's on this plate, you can see it on our plate.
Yeah, right. So, it's 50 feet of buffer, tree buffer, that's gonna remain there. There are a few trees that need to be cut, mainly in this back quadrant here, oops, wrong button, sorry. Mainly in this area here, from this picture.
But the, but nothing goes, yeah, you show some fence, nothing's going on the buffer?
Correct. And that's a deeded, that's a deeded buffer when Mr. Foote purchased it from the city. Has nothing to do with Conservation Commission buffer.
Who owns it?
Uh, Mr. Foote.
Oh, okay, it's part of your property?
Yes. It's in a buffer that runs around the whole industrial park, so that you can't build anything within 50 feet of the people outside the park.
Okay. Are there restrictions on, like, do you have to keep it up in a certain way? Does plant tree know it?
No, I think the neighbors use it to poke punch their leaves and their branches and their yards in it. Actually, the butter to the south of us is encroaching, you see on the plan, on Mr. Foote's property in that buffer.
Yeah, the overhead?
Yes, the overhead and lawn area. So, yeah. This is building nine, typical, you know, storage units, looking at a floor plan. You know, these units have different size units, 5 by 10s, 10 by 10s, 10 by 15s, and you have typical storage units with doors every, in each bay. This is an elevation of the building 10 in the back. It would be metal sided, and this is the emergency pass door for the building. Height of the building's only 10 feet for both buildings, so they're not very tall at We, VHB did a traffic report, which is part of your packet. And we wanted to look at how many trips per day we're coming out of storage units and in and out, which are very, very small numbers. And of course, it is an industrial park. So, that's within that area, or within your filing and packet. So, I'll kind of skip through...
Unless, yeah, unless Devin, Devin's probably the one who understands this, but...
No, I've read pretty the traffic report, too.
Oh, good, okay.
The next section I have is relative to the stormwater drainage system. Wayne has copies of the report.
Yeah, did you, is the DPW, there was one open issue about the 10-year?
Two. Two issues with DPW.
10-year flood, that's the second issue?
Two, two issues. One issue was the total suspended solid removal, with TSS removal, and by having a bio-retention area, that satisfies it. You need to have 80% minimum. Bio-retention area gives you 90%. So, the revised plans, excuse me, do meet that criteria. The other request from DPW was that the stormwater basins for building 10, excuse me, draining for the 10-year storm event within 72 hours, so that if we have a rain event, or 10-year storm event, within 72 hours, if we get another storm event, the stormwater system can handle it, and the revised plans meet that criteria.
Has the DPW signed it?
No. No, DPW has not signed off on it yet. We just worked out these plans this week, and they have not...
So, the condition Carolyn gave you and his staff to propose for that?
Right, right.
Right, so we're gonna, we're gonna condition the permit that you have to have instead of the DPW.
Correct, that's fine, and we got permission, or we got approval tonight from Conservation Commission that this, the site doesn't require a stormwater permit, because we're not disturbing over an acre.
Right, that's why I...
But it is under jurisdiction of, of the Conservation Commission, and because it's a major project, you know...
Right, but, but the DPW still has to, even though you don't need a stormwater permit, if you hadn't had the stormwater permit, we wouldn't even be able to vote.
Right.
So, because you don't need, we're gonna condition that those two things are resolved.
Yeah, and we feel we've met them.
Okay. I'm sorry, did someone, what are you guys doing?
And just one of the conditions and concerns that the Conservation Commission has and requirements from DEP is that a site doesn't have an increase in stormwater runoff from what's existing there today to what would be after the buildings are built. So, within the calculations, we have a table that shows for each storm event, we have a decrease in stormwater runoff in the site by uses, even with the low-flow pipe that handles the runoff requirement from, of 72 hours for draining basis.
I was very happy to see 100-year storm up there. I don't see that.
Yeah, well, you know, in reality, if you look at the numbers within this table, the project is not very large, so the numbers are very small.
Right.
You know, the, the highest runoff is .88 CFS, you know, less than one CFS of rainfall during a 100-year storm event. It's a very small volume of water coming off of it. So, we were able to design the systems to handle all storm events and have a decrease in the peak runoff. Kind of relative to Conservation Commission, but I'll just touch on it. In order to comply with the local wetland bylaw that Northampton has, we have to do mitigation, so we have a complete mitigation project, which will include plantings of trees and shrubs in association with the projects, and they're noted on the plans. Also, some cleanup of the area, there's some railroad ties and so forth that are on the site that would be... This is the environmental end of it that I'll kind of skip through, but this is the environmental report, report from GZA that did the wetland delineation for the project. And this is some of the wetlands issues that we, we have dealt with through the Conservation Commission. The USGS map currently shows, and did show, a perennial stream running right through the middle of the industrial park. And so that we had to demonstrate that the perennial stream is no longer there, and the sections that are there are not flowing anymore. The perennial stream is, is a stream that flows year-round. And from the southerly side of the site, towards Bradford Street, is the old stream bed, and there's a pictures of the stream bed. And so we had to document, it's four, four days, consecutive days without it, and can't be in a drought. And of course, this year, we're definitely not in a drought, showing that there's no flow of storm water, or no flow in the stream channel. So, those are pictures that we, that are part of this application. So, that's...
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Did the lighting thing get addressed?
Yeah, there was one other issue about the, you're showing five-foot candles at the door of building 10?
Yes.
And you're allowed three. Have you guys addressed that?
If that's gonna be a condition that we have three, we have no issue with that.
Right, that would be a condition of the permit as well.
It's that simple, it's a 150-watt bulb, they drop it to 100-watt bulb, which is down to three-foot candles, and you're fine.
Right, yeah.
That's all you have to do.
Building nine doesn't have any lighting at all. There's existing lighting on building two, so we don't need any lighting whatsoever on building nine, which is closest to Industrial Drive. Building 10, we have two wall packs, one over each door, and then we have a third one on the easterly side, just for safety protection.
Okay, yeah, the Catherine, or sorry, Carolyn specifically addressed the door over building 10.
10, yeah.
So, we have that as a condition.
Yeah, and that's not a problem, we can reduce that to 100-watt bulb.
Any other questions from the board?
Quick curiosity, could DPW request a change in their finding analysis, they had already done 100-year, so I'm just curious, is that typically what happens?
Need to just both.
So, I guess the...
Because the profile's different for each one, so you could, you know, a storm couldn't, you couldn't hear your plans, good for 100-year, not good for 10-year.
I understood that that one went DPWS.
No, what they were curious about, DPWS, was that the applicant has not shown that water can be absorbed in 72 hours before it happens to rainfall, so there was one very specific question.
Right. They didn't meet that criteria.
Right, that's a local requirement from DPW. Under the State Wetlands Protection Act, you don't need to meet that requirement of four and a half inches of rainfall. You only have to meet .25 for recharge into the ground. That's a local DPW policy.
So, typically, what we do, anything, stormwater permit, if this was an over an acre disturbance, they would have to get a stormwater permit, which the DPW issues, we can't even vote on the permit until they got it. If the DPW can't be satisfied, we can't even vote on it. When it's less than that, but it's a site plan, the DPW can weigh in, because they're basically the city's engineer. So, they have to look at the plans to make sure, as the engineer of the city, that the plans are, meet the specs, and they can further condition it, so they send us their condition. But typically, we rely on them to make any kind of decisions based on...
And we were able to, to address those two concerns, so that...
Anybody, I would ask Mr. Foote, is anybody from the public would like to speak to this permit?
I've listened to enough tonight.
So, you guys, did you guys have to go to ZBX?
Oh, we were right behind you.
Oh, yeah, we're behind them in ZBX.
So, long night. Brent?
I actually did a site visit to this thing, and the only thing you'll be able to see from Industrial Drive is the building, the end of building nine, and all the rest of the stuff is a place I've never saw, never knew even existed.
Yeah, this, yeah, that view right here, the end of this 10-foot wide building, yes.
All right, so just getting the, well, one of you guys has, so, is there any other questions from the board? I would say we should close the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Okay.
Any discussions on the project? The two conditions is noted, that reduce the lighting levels to three-foot candles, and that they must have the DPW sign off on the 10-year flood.
And also, give these kind of stormwater management.
Oh, and, well, in its entirety.
All right, so just get me, well, one of you guys has agenda. So, is there any other questions from the board? I would say we should close the public hearing.
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Okay.
Any discussions on the project? The two conditions is noted, that reduce the lighting levels to three-foot candles, and that they must have the DPW sign off on the 10-year flood.
I can also, I'll give you some other management.
Oh, and? Well, in its entirety.
And for TSS or over.
Right.
I would just toss in there that they should be resuming, I mean, the lighting regulations in general specifically mentioned that one thing, but that's sort of a catch-all.
Okay.
There are no parking areas.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry.
I'm in favor of whatever was.
Who's that, do you win it?
Yeah, go ahead. I don't have a line.
I move that we approve a major site plan status for 94 Industrial Drive, Northampton map, map ID 25A-222.
With conditions.
With two conditions.
Three conditions.
With three conditions.
I think Jen got that one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Now we do.
Okay, thank you.